I call the July 20, 2021 closed session meeting to order of the City of Fullerton City Council. Madam Clerk, would you conduct the roll?
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
Councilmember Zara.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dunlap and Councilmember Silva are not yet present.
And do you want to give a short notice of how those at home may participate?
Thank you, Mayor. Governor Newsom proclaimed a COVID-19 state of emergency in March 2020 and issued executive order N 2920, which allows legislative bodies to hold teleconference meetings virtually to council members and the public. The public can access live meetings at fullerton.legistar.com on Spectrum Channel 3 and ATT Uverse Channel 99. The council chamber will have seating available for the public, and all persons visiting city facilities should observe current health and safety protocols. The public can also address city council in person or virtually by joining the Zoom meeting online or by telephone. If you choose to join over computer, the address is zoom.us/join. If you're going to join over telephone, the number is 1-669-900-9128. The meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and you can find further instructions for participating via Zoom on the agenda for this meeting. If you're here to address council in person, please register at the front counter at the city manager's office. And as always, members of the public, regardless of how they address the city council, may speak only one time during public comments and once on each agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney, we have an item that was added too late to be agendized. Could you explain?
Since the posting of the agenda, it cannot wait to the next regular council meeting. The HR department has asked that we add an item regarding labor negotiations involving the Police Management Association with Mr. Manfred and Ms. Mercer as the negotiating representatives for the city. And we'd ask a motion to bring that onto the agenda. Requires a unanimous vote.
And we could take that vote at this time.
Please.
Would the motion...
I'll move it.
I'll second.
And Mayor Whitaker.
Aye.
Councilmember Jung.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara.
Aye.
Passes unanimously.
And with that, we will now hear public comment on closed session items only. Those who have registered to speak, would you line up alongside the north wall? And the first speaker, please go to the microphone.
Good after... Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, and people attending. I'm Juliana Nunesi, and I just want to thank our Chief of Police, Robert Dunn, for coming to our sixth grade graduation at Pacific Drive Elementary and for always setting a good example of hard work and community work. Thank you, Chief Dunn, and all the policemen and women who work hard to keep this city safe. Thank you.
Can I translate for the lady?
Sure, to you.
Oh, yes.
You can either stand next to each other or use this one.
Okay.
I'll try to do it in English. I just want to thank Chief Dunn, say that he has done a really great job. He has worked with the community. I haven't seen in other times in the past that Chief of Police working with the community as close as he has done with us. And we have had many events that he has participated with us, and I'm really thankful for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Ah, buenas tardes. Solo quería... Estoy aquí presente para darle las gracias al Chief Dunn for involucrarse en la comunidad y tener la comunidad más segura. Gracias.
Okay. Her name is... Is your name?
My name is Gabriela Reyes.
Okay. Her name is Gabriela Reyes, and she's a resident of Fullerton, and she comes to thank Chief Dunn for the great job and the involvement that he has in the community, and she's very grateful for his work in our neighborhoods.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, councils. My name is Karim, and I'm just here just to let you guys know that since Chief Dunn has been in the position of the chief, he's been very involved with the community. We've noticed that more people are more comfortable asking when he has a coffee with the cups, he shows up and some of them are... Some of our families will go show up, and then they are more comfortable talking to them, not only because he's more accessible, but he's friendly and he has helped a lot. And before, I never see that, and I think that's a very great thing about this city, that the police department, the chief, are more involved with our community members. And thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Dayani. I'm a resident of Fullerton for more than 25 years, and I'm here to thank Chief Dunn. He do a lot with us, like a community. He surprised me the last time I was volunteer, too, because he worked very hard at the Center of Hope. He do a lot working on the cleaning, cleaning that place. And for me, it's... He work a lot. He work very, very hard with the community. Just want to say thank... Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Blanca Hernandez, and Chief Dunn changed my perspective of a chief, a police chief. I thought that a chief was just eating his... Was sitting in his office eating donuts, but he... Last year, my, you know, class of 2020, students from high school, they graduate, and they don't have a ceremony. And he and his... The police department went to making like... They support them. And like, I really like that about him. And he also... I like he's more accessible to... And I like one time he help us clean with us on the garden over there in the hills. And I thought, you know, it changed my perspective. I would like to thank him, and thank you guys for your support to him, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor. This is Juliana Nunesi. A pleasure to see you. Councilmember Jung. Councilmember Zara. Well, I'm coming here, you know, very grateful for our Chief of Police, Robert Dunn. He's done so much work, like all our leaders in the community, they've been sharing with you. We have the opportunity to be putting ready the hub center, you know, for help with the problem that we have, the crisis of homelessness. And we are very grateful, too, to Councilman Fred Jung, because he was at that event. Councilmember Zara, thank you for always supporting to our community, coming with us and the police department. You, too, Mayor, working always to keep us, you know, united in this city. The job of Chief Dunn is always being credible. He is a leader. He have integrity. He's absolutely one of the persons that I respect so much in this community, because he comes to work with all of us. He's not afraid to come and show us and support us, and he have that leadership that bring closer the community and the police department. Now, our families, they are not scared to call the police to report crime, and we're working in different activities, and he's always there for the families, no matter what language. He make possible and accessible communication, breaking and making possible all the barriers that we have, language, technology. And he's creating that community effort in decreasing crime, in helping one another. And more in our areas, and we have so much crime, the people responding and reporting, which is a big problem in our areas that you guys are aware of that. And we are so grateful for having that leadership in our city and have that he's so humble and accessible, like all my friends are saying. For us, you know, it's something that we didn't see before, somebody so active in the community and creating, and always is proactive in working with all of us. And you see the care that he has for all the men and women that work at the police department, and I think he earned the respect of all of us, that we are here for him today. And we're very grateful and blessed to have in our city. I hope we have them for many more years and for create changes in policy, how to keep our neighborhood safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any callers?
No Zoom comments.
With that, then, we will adjourn to closed session. 2021 meeting of the City of Fullerton City Council, regular session, meeting to order. And Madam Clerk, could you please explain how those at home may participate and what the other requirements are this evening?
I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mayor. Governor Newsom proclaimed a COVID-19 state of emergency in March 2020 and issued an executive order that allows a legislative body to hold teleconference meetings accessible virtually to council members and the public. The public can access the live meeting at fullerton.legistar.com on Spectrum Channel 3 and ATT Uverse Channel 99. The council chambers will have limited seating available for the public, and all persons visiting city facilities should observe current health and safety protocols. The public can address city council in person or virtually. If you're going to address council virtually, you join the Zoom meeting either online at zoom.us/join, or you can call 1-669-900-9128. The meeting ID is 978-4219-1797, and further instructions are available on the agenda online. And while I have the microphone, would you like me to call Roll, Mayor?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Mayor Whitaker.
Here.
Councilmember Jung.
Present.
And Councilmember Zara.
Here.
And Mayor Protem Dunlap and Councilmember Silva are absent this evening.
Yes, so since we're at 60% tonight in terms of council members, we'll listen twice as hard. We are pleased this evening to have Pastor Robert Nixon and his wife Sharon is with him as well this evening to provide the invocation.
And we're going to open in prayer. First, I want to thank our city officials for, as I was telling Bruce, I appreciate the city. I've been here for 25 years, and I enjoy Laguna Lake. I go walk there every day. And this morning, I was thinking, because of this invitation, what a blessing it is to have a place to go walk and just enjoy the scenery and pray. So we're going to open up this meeting in prayer, too. Do you have any, Father, Lord, we come to you this evening, we lift this time up to you, we thank you for our city officials, we thank you for our city and the people to take care of it for us, and we lift them up to you, watch over them and protect them. We pray for our city, we pray for our county, we pray for our state, and we pray for our country. Lord, one nation under God, and I pray that we just continue to serve you and worship you and praise you and respect our country and respect our flag. We lift this meeting up to you and all the business it takes and the business at hand, and they'll be able to draw conclusions and be able to just continue to do the business at hand. And we just lift it up to you now, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen. Thank you.
Pastor Nixon. For those who are not familiar with New Wine Church, could you give a few lines on what your church is and the mission?
It's a recovery church. It's on Brookhurst in Orange Dorp. It's called New Wine Church. We have a ministry with motorcycles, if you can't tell. And we have a recovery church, we have a men's home and a women's home, and we have what we call a mannequin cart, where we give food out every day and just bless the people, because, as you know, the homeless situation is pretty much everywhere. And in our neighborhood, in that area, there's quite a bit, and we help them as much as we possibly can. And it's a friendly little family church. You're welcome to join us at 10 o'clock in the morning on Sunday. Come early, we have breakfast burritos, omelets, and quesadillas. Amen. Thank you. God bless.
Pastor Nixon, thank you for joining us this evening, and Sharon as well. Good to see you. With that, I have asked Councilmember Ahmad Zara to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you all please stand?
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
There's no report this evening.
Great. At this stage, ex parte communications report from council members, if there is anything to declare.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I had a conversation with the OCA representatives and with the Fire Fighter Association president. Thank you.
Nothing, Councilmember Jung?
Nothing.
Okay. I do have one item to report. Dan Lancaster, who heads the fire union, called me and contacted, and we talked about, among other things, an audit that they helped to lead of the city's finances, and he had a few concerns about that. So that's something that I'll be speaking with our city manager about. But that's all. It was just mostly general conversation, and he was providing much in the way of support for the city's mission. And with that, we have our first presentation this evening, which the general manager of the Orange County Water District, Mr. Michael Marcus, is here to make a presentation on PFAS and on the treatment plant, the first one to start in Orange County, the Chem 1A plant. Mr. Marcus.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. It's a pleasure to be here before the city council again. And I must say, this is the first time in a year and a half I've actually given a real presentation to real people. Everything else has been via Zoom, so I appreciate the invitation from the council to be able to come before you this evening and talk about this very important project that has been recently completed. And I want to thank city staff for putting the presentation together, so you'll see it's on city logo, and they did a wonderful job. So the first thing I wanted to talk about is the sources of water. Where does the City of Fullerton get their sources of water? And primarily from two places. One is from the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California, and the City of Fullerton is one of the original 13 MET member agencies, and so they are able to deal directly with MET. And MET provides about 25% of the city's water supply. The remainder of the water supply, 75% of the water supply, comes actually as groundwater. And the Orange County Water District oversees the groundwater basin and manages that basin here in central and northern Orange County. And the importance of that is that groundwater costs about half of what MET water does. So the more groundwater that the city can pump, the lower the overall cost of water for the city. Currently, the amount of pumping that the city can pump, it's actually not 75%, it's 77%. So the city can pump up to 77%. We're hopeful in the future, with the expansion of our recycled water project, the groundwater replenishment system, that maybe in two to three years, we'll actually be able to raise that pumping to about 83%. And so it's very, very important for us as groundwater managers to make sure that the groundwater is safe and clean. So that is what we do. We have found, however, in the groundwater basin, a compound called PFAS. Now PFAS is a family of compounds. They're per and polyfluoroalkyl substances. And what these are, particularly, there's three in particular that right now we have to look at. That's PFOA, PFOS, and PFBS. Now, PFOA and PFOS are the ones that we've found in the basin, and these are very persistent compounds. They're very strong. They're man-made compounds. So there are eight carbon chain attached to fluorine elements, and this carbon-fluorine bond is one of the strongest in nature. As a matter of fact, the only way you can really break it is through incineration. So there is no natural mechanism that would break these compounds down in the basin. So we need to remove them. They're in the water, and we'll go through and see why we have to remove these. And these are fairly ubiquitous. We find them everywhere. You can see up on the slide, we find them in all sorts of different everyday items that we use. They're primarily water repellents, so we see them on rain gear, we see them also in carpeting, anything non-stick also, so Teflon pans contain PFAS. And they are primarily from point sources. We've been able to actually identify one point source in the upper watershed. And that's the mechanism by which the PFAS is getting in the groundwater basin. We actually receive quite a bit of water that we recharge into the groundwater basin from the upper watershed. So there is water in the Santa Ana River that flows downstream, we put it in the basin. So there's this potential point source. Another source is wastewater discharge. So we find that the wastewater discharges in the upper watershed also contain PFAS in the water, and that's just, it comes through our body. We excrete it, it goes into the wastewater system, it comes downstream, it becomes part of the water supply for the groundwater basin. There is a well. A couple wells have been actually taken out of service for the city. One of them is the Kimberly 1A well. This is a very large producing well. It provides approximately 8% to 16% of the city's total water pumping. It was shut down. You can see in that table, there's something called an NL notification level, an RL, a response level. The notification levels and those numbers are in parts per trillion. So for PFOA, you can see there's a notification level of 5.2. That's parts per trillion. A part per trillion is equivalent to one drop of water in 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So it's an extremely small amount that we're measuring. And in fact, we're very fortunate, because we have a laboratory onsite in our campus in Fountain Valley that can test for PFAS down to those levels. And in fact, the lowest level that we can test PFAS using that equipment is two parts per trillion. So anything below two parts per trillion, we don't have the ability to test. It's considered non-detect. At the notification level, the water agency is to report to the governing body that PFAS has been detected. So that would typically be a city council or a county board of supervisors for anyone in unincorporated areas. The response level, however, is a little bit higher, and you can see for PFOA, it's 10 parts per trillion, and for PFOS, it's 40 parts per trillion. And the response level is a state recommendation that the water not be served to the public without treatment. So it's not a statutory requirement, but if the city were to serve it, they would have to notice every single customer of theirs and tell them that they're serving water that the state deems to be unsafe. And so all the retail water agencies in Orange County, if they exceed a response level, they choose to shut that well down. And what has to be done is then treatment has to be put on that well. You notice the last one, PFBS, that recently came up, the state has set notification and response levels. However, the levels that we're finding it are far, far below a notification and response level, so it's nothing that is of concern at this point in time. As far as a partnership, there's been a great partnership between the city and the Orange County Water District. Our Board of Directors, very early on and very proactively, adopted a policy by which they said that they would pay for half the capital cost, I'm sorry, 100% of the capital cost and half the ONM costs for any treatment system for any of the retail water agencies that were affected by PFAS. So the board implemented this policy. Also, what they did early on is we developed a research endeavor by which we took a well, we tested various types of media, treatment technologies. And basically, there's two types of treatment technologies, granulated activated carbon and ion exchange. So what we did is we tested a number of different carbon and resin products to find the one that was most effective, so that we could treat at the lowest possible cost for the retailers. So we put that into play very early on. We also decided to pre-purchase the vessels, these treatment vessels that the resin is stored in, and pre-purchase, pre-purchase not only the vessels but the resin as well. And utilizing that strategy, we figured that we'd be able to put these projects online as quickly as possible. The district also chose consultants to do the design work. We put the projects out to bid, we managed the construction, and then turned the projects over to the city. And also dealt with the regulatory agents issues, because there were regulatory issues. Because of the piloting, we were able to use the resin right away, which caused us to be able to put the projects online sooner. And I want to really commend the city staff, under the leadership of Meg McWade, your Director of Public Works, and also Dustin Enslinger and Tiffany Foo. They all did a tremendous job in coordinating, not only with the district, but with the regulators as well. And that's what led to the success of this project. And so I just really, really want to emphasize that point. As far as the design, the design was started in May of 2020, completed in 20 September of that year. We selected ion exchange as the treatment process, mainly because of the constrained site at Kimberly 1A. It was very constrained, and the footprint for ion exchange is about a third of that of carbon. But also, the resin we found was the most economical, and it has the benefit also of removing some of the smaller chain PFAS as well. So we did the design, we started the construction in November. The treatment plant went online June 30, just over a month ago. We have done, of course, preliminary testing, and we have seen that the treatment system does remove the PFAS to a non-detect level. So the treatment system is working. This is Orange County's first wellhead treatment plant to remove PFOA and PFOS. I would say, right now, there are approximately 60 wells countywide that are affected, and Fullerton has, I believe, three. So right now, they only have two, because we put one of them online. But we are working with all the other retail agencies within Orange County, and we should be putting Yorba Linda and Serrano Water Districts online by the end of this year. And then progressively, the City of Garden Grove is affected, the City of Santa Ana, the City of Orange, all these other cities we're working very closely with. But Fullerton is a first, and something to be very proud of. So just some construction photos. I'm glad they did this. My background's in construction management, so I really geek out on the slides, but you can see some of the work that was done on the site as far as putting the rebar, pouring the slabs, installing some of the underground work. You can see the vessels there. That's what the vessels look like. So they were delivered on a Saturday, I believe. I believe a couple council members were actually out at the site and participated or actually saw the vessels being set. So there's a total of four vessels onsite, two separate treatment trains, and the flow out of this pump will be split between two of those treatment trains. So the water will flow through one vessel, which is a lead vessel, and then into a second one, which is the lag vessel. And once, in the lead vessel, once we see the levels of PFOA going up, we'll take that out of service, run it through the other vessel, and then replace the media in the lead vessel, and then they'll go back and forth. So having these two vessels allows us to continually operate, even when we're changing the media out, so that the city can keep this running on a full-time basis. More photos showing various stages of construction and a couple websites. So the city has a website, the district has a website, DDW, Division of Drinking Water, also a website, if anyone wants to find out any information regarding PFAS. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and if I can't answer it, I hope Meg's behind me somewhere.
Any questions by members of council?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Marcus, and I believe you have someone from your team also here from OCWD. Is there anyone else with you?
I'm not sure, but I would like to acknowledge Chris Olson. I know Chris is on vacation. He's up in Mammoth, so Chris isn't there. Ben Smith also was a project engineer and...
He's on Zoom.
Oh, Ben's on Zoom.
Well, thank you all of you for all the tremendous work, and we're proud of it. And then thank you, Meg, and your team.
Yeah.
For this coordination. This is a project to be proud of. Thank you.
Mr. Marcus, I've told people for some time... Mr. Marcus, I've told people for some time that the Orange County Water District has labored greatly to prevent having to treat water at the wellhead. But in this case, they lowered the parts per trillion so much that we had no recourse. People have had concerns. I know a newspaper article talked about how this could actually impact water bills at some point. I just wanted to say that hasn't happened yet. And in the event that it does happen, the best measure that we had is it might cost, you know, we bill every two months here in Fullerton. It might cost an additional forty dollars for every two-month billing period. We're very hopeful, however, though, that OCWD will be able to make recoveries. And I'm not sure what that'll look like down the line, but I don't know if you have a comment about that.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Mayor, yes. Right now, the costs, what we're doing is we're adding those costs onto our replenishment assessment to help cover those costs. So that's the amount of, the amount that the city would pay to pump water out of the ground. It's currently five hundred and seven dollars an acre foot, the replenishment assessment. That actually went up four and a half percent this year, and the major reason was to help fund these PFAS projects. However, we will be successful in obtaining a low-interest WIFI loan through the federal government, which will help lower the overall costs. We will very actively be pursuing grant funding, both at the state and the federal level. And we have also filed a lawsuit to help recover. And in fact, the city is a co-plaintiff in that lawsuit. We're using contingent fee lawyers, so it's not costing any money out of pocket, which is a good thing. And the team that was chosen to litigate against the manufacturers of the PFAS have been successful in the past in litigating this issue. So we hope that we will be able to tremendously offset the costs that we're having to spend now moving forward in the future. We will take every effort to do so.
Well, thank you for that. Thank you for taking the time to explain to people. And those websites are very full of a lot of information and some great visuals for anyone who's interested. I know one thing, hopefully, that if the cost can be reimbursed at some point or controlled, we're working feverishly here to replace some aging water mains throughout the city. We have an extraordinary number of water main breaks every year. So right now, I know that the Water Department has the ability to shoulder some of these costs for PFAS treatment. But what that will do is retard. It will slow down our ability to replace our infrastructure, which is very important to the city. So we're hoping that those producers will come through and help replenish our capability in that regard.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Mr. Marcus. Appreciate it. Any questions at this stage? Seeing none?
Good seeing you. Thank you very much.
And we have another presentation this evening, which is Shield for Kids. Welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to share a nonprofit with you and your city. So I'd like to give you a little story, what explains the how and why we have a nonprofit. So if you could visualize a time when you were a small child, if you remember a time when your mother was in the kitchen cooking your favorite dish, and how your mother always made sure you were well-groomed and dressed, how you couldn't wait for your father to get home from work. He would sit on his favorite chair and pick you up. You'd watch TV together. He'd hug you in your arms. You and your siblings would be playing games till it was time to go to sleep. In your home, you felt safe, loved, with your family all around you. However, everything changed when you turned five years old. Your mother became ill with cancer, and she left you. The last time you saw her is when you buried her at the cemetery. As years passed, your father started working longer hours. He started drinking. You're no longer watching TV together. The games with your siblings ceased because everyone had new roles of responsibility. Sometimes you'd be awakened from your sleep to the sounds of sobbing. You'd walk down the hallway to that direction. It'd always lead you to the same door, your father's door. And you could hear your father on the other side of the door crying in his prayers. You wanted to run to him, but his door was always locked. At the age of nine, a sibling was to take you to Bible studies. Instead, they took you to the movies. When your father comes home from work, he finds out, becomes upset, and uses his belt to discipline you and your siblings. The neighbors hear all the crying. They call the police. The police arrive, and they do see visible belt marks. They remove you and your siblings from your father and your home, place you in protective custody, and they separate you from your siblings. Over the next several years, you're bouncing around from one foster home to another, carrying all your belongings in a large trash bag, just like this one here. The only time you see your siblings is in court. You go to court for about four years, at which time the court is finally pleased that your father's turned his life around, and they allow you to go back home with your father and with your siblings. That was my wife's childhood. I was a detective on Los Angeles Police Department. I was assigned to our abuse child unit. I investigate cases where the parent or legal guardian either killed, physically or sexually abused their kids. I could start my day at the coroner's office staring at a three-year-old motionless on a stainless steel table as I wait for the medical examiner to determine the cause of injuries, the cause of death. Or I could be at a hospital providing a sexual assault kit as a physician is about to conduct a physical on a fourteen-year-old. Or I could be at a school nurse with a teacher interviewing a student, again, trying to determine the cause of injuries. Once I took the case, I would locate all the kids and remove them from the school or home, take them back with me to the police station, no time for them to pack any bags, and I'd take them back to the station, notify the Department of Children and Family Services, and ask them where they would like to place the kids. Sometimes I might separate the kids. I might take one to San Pedro. I might take one to North Hollywood. And the last one, I might take to Riverside. It was all day into the night, into the morning, sometimes one, two o'clock in the morning. And I'm telling this nine-year-old child that he's going to go stay in this house with strangers. Sometimes he would reach for my hand and stand behind me because they've been with me all day, and I've been feeding him from the vending machines. I'd push their hand away and tell them, "Go stay inside this house," and then leave. It's because of our life experiences is why we decided to start a nonprofit, Shield for Kids. We had two programs. Our first program are the backpacks. What we do is we provide the backpacks to law enforcement so that when they remove a child and place them in protective custody, they can give this child a backpack. We feel the backpack helps in the transition, staying with the foster home. Inside, this is one of the backpacks. And what we do is we identify the backpack by the sex, girl or boy, and then small, this is small four-six. And inside the backpack, I don't want to pull everything out because it's on the table, but we have, she gets a teddy bear. This is for a girl. She gets a doll. She gets a blanket. She gets underwear. She gets socks. She gets sleepwear, toothbrush, hairbrush, hair ties, body wash, hand sanitizer. So, and this backpack, also two of the backpack, and it's given to the child. The second program is our excursions. And what we do is we work with Department of Solid Services to locate the siblings, especially if they've been separated, and we arrange for a day of excursion so they could spend a day of fun at Knott's Berry Farm or Universal Studios. Now, if you don't mind, if I could ask the council members or their staff, does anyone know what month breast cancer awareness is?
October.
Yes, sir. Do you know what the color is?
Pink.
Yes. Do you know what month child abuse awareness is? In 1983, President Reagan signed a proclamation stating that April will be the month that, as a nation, we observe as child awareness. Does anyone know what the color is? It's blue. In 1989, a grammar by the name of Bonnie Finney was called to a crime scene to identify her three-year-old grandson, Michael. Michael was stuffed and killed inside a toolbox, very similar to this, but it was all metal, and thrown into the creek by her daughter's husband. What Bonnie did is she got a blue ribbon tied to her car antenna, and when she drove around town, people would ask her, "What is that blue ribbon for?" And she said the last time she saw her three-year-old grandson, Michael, his lifeless body was all black and blue, and she wanted to bring community awareness to her neighborhood. Now, if I could give you some national statistics and local statistics, nationwide, a child abuse call is made every ten seconds. This is George Almaz. He is a six-year-old boy that lived in the city of Fullerton. He was abused, tortured, and killed by his stepmother last June 1st. George will now go into the national statistics, which is, before today is over, on average, five kids will die to either physical abuse or neglect. This is a combination I received from the district attorney's office when I arrested and got a prosecution for a thirty-year-old man who was molesting boys in his neighborhood. Those boys, too, will go into the national statistics, which is, one out of every four girls and one out of every six boys will be sexually abused before their eighteenth birthday. In 2019, Los Angeles County Department of Children and Family Services received one hundred fifty-four thousand and eighteen referrals. Riverside County received sixty thousand nine hundred thirty-three referrals. Orange County received forty-one thousand seven hundred one referrals. The city of Fullerton, out of that forty-one thousand, was thirteen hundred and nine, I'm sorry, one thousand three hundred and nine referrals. That same year, one Ellie Cordell's handled eighteen thousand four hundred eighty-three dependency hearings. The other night, I was watching TV. I saw the commercial about the sad puppy, and they're asking me if I want to make a donation. I started screaming at the TV, "What about all the kids?" So out of curiosity, I Googled, "How many nonprofits are there for animals?" And it said forty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-four. Then I Googled, "What about, how many for abused kids?" One thousand five hundred and nine. Shield for Kids, we don't ask for donations. We're looking for investors, people that want to invest in their community, investors that want victims of child abuse to know that a community supports them and stands with them under an unknown journey. One of the definitions of a shield is to protect someone. That's where we came up with our logo, and the color blue, the same one as Bonnie Finney did. When we deliver the backpacks to law enforcement, it's not just a one-time drop-off. We are supporting law enforcement and through them, supporting the victims of child abuse. What we ask is that when they do use our backpacks, for them to provide us with the information, the DCS worker, so that we could arrange the excursions. A few months ago, we delivered backpacks to Los Angeles Police Harbor Station. Within a couple of weeks, they called and said they used three backpacks. They arrested a mother on drug charges and later discovered that she had three boys, four, six, and eight. They had been living out of car for over a year. The backseats were the eight slept and played. They had no shoes or socks. When the detective gave the backpacks to the boys, he said they had puzzled looks, and he had to reassure them that the backpacks were theirs. The most recent incident, again, was George Almaz from Pomona. Pomona Police removed five of his siblings from ages one to thirteen, and he placed them in protective custody, and all five of them got the Shield for Kids backpacks. As I wrap up the presentation, if I could ask for your assistance by reaching out to other cities, community leaders, businesses, churches, and the public. We are often turned away or ignored being told that they have no time. I will take the presentation anywhere for child abuses in every community. And there's no need to thank us for what we are doing. Let us thank you for contributing and investing in your community so that we can keep our program going. In closing, I would like to quote Nelson Mandela, who said, "History will judge us by the difference we make in our everyday lives of children." Also, too, I wanted to acknowledge that one of the Fullerton businesses is here with me, First American Credit Union, who made the contributions for the backpacks for Fullerton Police Department. And I also have one of the directors from UPS, who recently is also going to start sponsoring our nonprofit. And is there, they want to, can we take a picture with the council members and the mayor?
Certainly.
Thank you, sir.
Cut down.
Would you like to get in the picture as well?
I want you in the picture.
Maybe come in front. Yeah. Taller people in the back. Okay. All right. One, two, three. One more picture. One, two. Right. And look here, hold my child. This is Northmont County Chamber. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, sir. Thank you very much.
Before we begin with public comments, we do have another announcement by the city attorney.
Yes, I failed earlier to announce that in the case of Teddy versus, and Teddy versus the city of Fullerton on a property damage case, the city has settled that matter in the sum of two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you for that. I also have an announcement before we start with public speakers. Staff has requested to remove items number ten and twelve from our consent agenda this evening. And without objection by the council members, that will be done, in case anyone was intending to address those two items. Now with that, those who have registered to speak on public comment will line up on the north wall, and the first speaker can come to the microphone. I do want to stress that we will hear public comment on non-agenda items only. If you wish to speak to an agenda item, you'll wait till that item appears. And we will also accept requests to pull consent calendar items, even from members of the public.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, as people line up, I would like to pull items number three and six.
Okay. Three and six.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be pulling item fourteen.
Okay, and fourteen. All right, got it. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, and staff. My name is Jose Trinidad Castaneda. So a couple of things I wanted to address the council and the city. So thank you for the opportunity to have served. I moved from Fullerton to Bluna Park, right next to the airport, recently. And so I just wanted to start off by saying thank you for all the opportunities to learn and grow here. And who knows if the housing crisis is ever worked on, maybe I have a chance to afford a condo here in Fullerton where a lot of my family lives. I wanted to bring up the fact that you all, the city is putting on an urban forestry and Fullerton Community Forest Management Plan and having a public meeting tomorrow at the city yard from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. I think this is important to bring up as part of my public comment because, I don't know if he's here, Jensen Hallstrom and I, you know, worked very hard to advocate for more trees here in the city of Fullerton, so really grateful to him and other advocates that are fighting to bring more trees and have a better city overall. I also wanted to bring up that homelessness is still very much a huge topic in our city. And even before coming to City Hall, I was talking with an elderly woman who was experiencing homelessness outside of State or Brothers on Euclid and Commonwealth. And just, you know, I only bring this up just because, from what we heard earlier, there are so many significant issues that, like the nonprofit brought up about child abuse... abuse, but also what we'll probably hear later on this evening is that homelessness is still very much at the top of mind, and whatever the city can do to help lead on expanding homes, especially affordable homes, through our housing element process will be a huge help, not just for people who are experiencing homelessness, but for young generations like myself who hope to own a home here, especially when we see like two, three-bedroom, two-bath or three-bedroom, one-bath homes go for eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is totally, is just astronomically unaffordable right now. So, thank you again. Have a good night.
Thank you, and thanks for the announcement of the event tomorrow.
Good evening, Mayor Whitaker, council members. I'm here today as a resident of Fullerton to discuss the homeless issues happening at the Pacific Drive Park. I want to thank the police department for coming out and supporting the community, as they've been called quite recently, a few times due to the altercations and due to the issues of people parking overnight, bathing in the park, setting up camp, and unfortunately, many in our, in our area are feeling unsafe, and the, the park bathrooms are open, and that has now become a, a permanent storage for the, the homeless. And so I asked the city manager to please allocate resources for the Parks and Recreation Department to have staff that will at least be able to lock the restrooms at night, to ensure that we don't have graffiti, vandalism. I've gone into, to the restrooms and unfortunately have seen needles, have seen items that are just, just unacceptable for, for children and, and the families in District Four. We've seen this issue continue, and we've asked for help from, from the city and from the police department to patrol, and we hope that the city will do something. We have family members here from the community that will speak more, but I, I want to see something happen where the city is allocating resources appropriately. The second issue is on the Pacific Drive Park. I know that it is an agenda item. We have yet to see the project go underway. The city did promise the community that the park would be, would, would have investment and that we would see new, you know, new building at, at the park, and we think that that is something that we're going to need to have sooner rather than later, to also help with just restoring Fullerton to the beautiful community that we want it to be. Thank you so much. I'll pass it over to my neighbors in District Four.
Good evening, council. My name is Orielle Barba. I live in the neighborhood along Walnut Avenue next to Pacific Park, and I'm really coming here to speak for this guy because his favorite thing to do is go walking in the park every day, play on the playgrounds and all of that. We've been living in Fullerton now for about seven years. It was always kind of talked about that Pacific Park would get renovated. Looks like it's finally going to happen. We're really excited about that. But one of my concerns is the parking lot in Pacific Park. Just recently, the past few months, has become a little bit more of an issue, people going there to drink, driving into the parking lot, parking, drinking. We see a lot of activity overnight, people driving up and then driving out of the parking lot, even though the park's closed at sunset. So, it's just, at times, it is a little uncomfortable, walking him, seeing people drinking, seeing other things going on. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the bathrooms are close to the playground, but unfortunately, those bathrooms usually are, you know, pretty dirty. There's often a lot of trash where we have to walk by to get to the playground. Overnight, there's people that use the playground equipment either to sleep or just hang out. So, that kind of raises some concern in wanting to take him to the park to be able to play. So hopefully, when the park's renovated, something can be done to address that situation in that parking lot. Yeah, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Ava, and I live by Pacific Drive Park too. I just moved in. So I do have some safety concerns, so the parking lot area, I don't feel very comfortable. I usually like to skate towards that area, and there is a lot of drinking, so I'll find beer bottles, glass broken everywhere, a lot of staring, and I don't feel very comfortable walking around. I feel there's lots of aggressiveness towards each other, and it doesn't make me feel safe. There is a lot of junk being thrown everywhere, so clothes, different trash being thrown out of the trash cans. And the other day, I was actually exposed to a man showering naked, and it made me also feel very uncomfortable seeing that as well, and not making me feel very safe at night or even in the morning, and there's just a lot of activity going on even after the park is closed. So I just hope that something happens for these different types of situations, but that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, hi, hello there. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor. Well, I have been a resident of Fullerton, went to Laguna Road, I mean Laguna Road Elementary, La Dura Vista, Fullerton High School. So I grew up much of my life here in Fullerton. I am an engaged, active member of the city. I also have this issue with Pacific Drive Park. It was never like that, me growing up. It was one of the nicest areas, you know? I've had a couple of run-ins with some of the homeless, and like I said, I, I have a heart, you know? I am being compassionate and stuff like that, but the things that they're doing now with the, their altercations between each other, especially late at night, you don't feel safe. Safety exposure to, you know, being nude, taking a shower, using the bathrooms as their home, and it's just, it's like, it's like a whole different area to me now, you know? And it's, it is a problem everywhere. I, I drive over to Bluna Park, it's the same area, but mostly in this park, it seems like they're just there. They've used it as an encampment, you know? And just for safety issues, you know, if we can put in like a loitering certain, a time where they cannot, you know, like basically reside there, right? So, I just want the city to do something about this. It's, it's been just gradually, the last months, getting, it's worsened. So, thank you. Thank you for hearing me out. Good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening.
My name is Avery Alvarez. I go to Troy, and I also wanted to-
A little closer to the microphone, if you could.
I also wanted to talk about the park, the Pacific Drive Park, and I saw, the other day, I also saw somebody showering, and I saw them, my dad, and I was noticing how they like formed a community. There's trash everywhere, car parts, and then in the bathroom, it's like they make it their home. I saw them sleeping on the playground and in their cars, and every morning, they're just like walking around. Sometimes they even like fight and yell at each other, and it's just, makes me feel really uncomfortable when I'm, just want to walk around the park, so, yeah. That's all I wanted to say.
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Council, my name's Darrell Turk. I'm a resident here in Fullerton, and I want to speak on the subject of the proposed Pathways of Hope development along Commonwealth near Basque. I feel like there has been a lack of transparency in what has been proposed and what is in the works as far as this development. From my understanding, it is to be a facility at this point for addicted persons, and that there has been discussion that their addictive behavior could be tolerated within the facility, which to me is a problem in the proximity of the neighborhood where my child, my family lives. That is not the type of behavior that helps the community. I feel like if the council is behind that type of development, that it could be proposed in different area, maybe, you know, an area closer to you as opposed to those of us that are doing our best to maintain our families and maintain our property values. If Section Eight is something that would accommodate this, then that could be something that could be spread out throughout the city, as opposed to one central location that is very impactful on the property values of one location. So, we would really appreciate if you would understand that this type of development, the impact that it'll have on the immediate community, the grocery stores, the neighborhoods that are in between. We already have, as everyone has mentioned, a significant issue with the homeless. So if we concentrate the drug aspect that is part of the proposal for this development, I think we would greatly appreciate if you would understand that those of us in the proximate community are very opposed to that being developed there. Thank you for your time.
Your Honor, my name's Kelly Nealon. I'm here because I lost my home here in Fullerton. My grandma originally bought here in fifty-four. I've been forced to be one of the homeless on the street that everybody's talking about, but I've tried to keep my act clean, and I've gotten a few tickets during COVID, which I thought we were supposed to have some kind of amnesty for. The DMV has squashed my tickets, but they have impounded my vehicle anyways because of some outside entity called Pticket.com. So now I'm without nothing. My food's rotting in my camper for two weeks now, and I can't get a release. I wish I could get somebody to look into this, get this straightened out. My DMV records clear on my vehicle. I have, they have no reason to impound it. I would like to get it back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Candace Gale, and I'm a Fullerton resident, and I'm here to voice my support of your decision on the removal of the ramps below St. Jude Hospital, the bike ramps. I walk the trails parallel to Baston Shury from Brea to the dam pretty much every day, and over the years, watched the expansion of certain section of the trails and the building of the ramps. And in so doing, a lot of bushes and trees have been removed. Once I asked two young boys why they were tearing down the branches of a tree, and, which was next to one of the ramps that was in process of being built, and they explained that it was in their way, and it really kind of saddened me that they're modeling on behavior of other adults who are taking the responsibility of making these ramps without any approval. I had actually asked some of the young men working who had a generator and were pumping water from the creek if they had a permit to do this, and they said yes. City of Fullerton had approved this, and I said okay, and kept on, and over the years, watched it grow. But sadly to say, that tree that the boys were taking off the limbs is no longer there. You do see a lot of families and people of all ages enjoying the trails, biking, hiking, exploring, and that's what I'd like to hopefully continue seeing. And I just feel that the bike ramps aren't a bad thing, it's just how they went about it, and there might be a place, an appropriate reason to have them there, but I just wanted you to know, I thought the way it, it happened over the years, put you in a position, and all of us in Fullerton, in terms of liabilities and what can go on there, and I just wanted you to know that you do have our support, at least some of us. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Next speaker, please.
Hello, mayor and council. My name's Stephanie Bromley, Fullerton resident. Pardon me for not looking you in the eye, but I feel more comfortable reading from this, so I won't forget. I want to express my astonishment to the city about working with Pathways of Hope on developing a housing project at sixteen-hundred West Commonwealth. I can't understand why council would enter into an ENA with Pathways, given the bad history between our neighborhood and POH. Our neighborhood has been lied to and deceived by Pathways and its representatives. I know they have to do community outreach as part of this ENA. We tried this in the past. I attended their one-sided outreach meetings, where they say they'll take questions, but only certain questions. They knocked on our front doors, but neighbors were getting conflicting information. I attended permanent supportive housing tours with Pathways members and Councilman Silva. The whole experience was disappointing and was so rehearsed. No one really wanted to hear neighbor concerns, so I won't be participating in that again. My main objection to this project is that it will turn into permanent supportive housing that the council rejected in 2018, and that Pathways also withdrew its ENA for. Yet it still promotes this on this website, on, on Pathways' website, and they've done so since 2018. So what is it? Is it permanent supportive housing, or is it affordable housing? We are being lied to again. Let me be clear, I am not against affordable housing, but I don't believe that this project will be a hundred percent affordable housing with Pathways' involvement based on past dealings. My other issues with this property is the size, lack of parking, and increased traffic. Even without anything built there, it takes me twenty-five minutes to drive down either Commonwealth or Malvern Chapman on a regular school day to take my kids to La Dura Vista and Fullerton High. With fifty-two proposed units, maybe double or triple occupancy, means that a hundred and fifty or more people in cars on that street will increase the amount of traffic already there. I am asking you to please go back to the drawing board and select another developer who doesn't have anything to do with Pathways. Please terminate your ENA with this developer and choose one who will really listen to the neighborhood concerns. Thank you.
I can't follow her as well. I'm just not that good at public speaking. Very good at emails, but terrible at public speaking. But council members, mayor, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'm here more so just to make a public statement. I tried to buy that property, that Pathways of Hope entered into an agreement with, with you all on. I tried to buy it. I was willing to pay six to eight million for that property. I asked for, for LOI. I don't even know what an ENA stands for, never heard that before, but whatever, you know? I owned my own business, Byron, for twenty years. I owned five companies. I met with the city of Pomona today. I'm gonna purchase my third property there. I tried to purchase, purchase a property here, that property, and couldn't even enter into an agreement to buy it. And all I wanted to do is like buy it. I was willing to pay market value for that property. I think at that time, I was dealing with, with Greg Seaborn, who I talk to on the phone to this day. Love the guy to death, he's a good friend of mine. Was a great pro temp mayor, great council member, as you guys are, and I'm not, have no complaints about that, but I do question Pathways of Hope when I was trying to purchase that land. I was told by then, city manager Ken Domer, that I could not purchase it because there's too much controversy because of us trying to buy it. Again, market value, six, eight million. You're entering into an agreement that's a lot less than that. But I could not purchase it because there's too much controversy between us and Pathways of Hope specifically. So I understand there's like terms have changed since then, because now there's some new laws, you have to sell it for affordable housing or whatever, but I'm fine with that. Like you want to sell it for affordable housing, that's fine, even if you're like dealing with permanent supportive housing or whatever, but Pathways of Hope had lied to our neighborhood. I mean, there's, we, we have recordings of people saying certain things in our neighborhood, which you all know. I know that they did try to do some outreach, and they lied, they said stuff. Right now, they're trying to enter agreements with you, but no one's reached out to us about this. They're telling you right now, this is for affordable housing. It's not. I mean, if you go on their website- I mean, if you go on their website, this exact property is for permanent supportive housing, yet they're telling you it's allocated for affordable housing, depending on certain median incomes and stuff like that. It's simply not. And you know what? Maybe they'll change their website or whatever to dictate what they told you and past dealings, but that's not what their website dictates, and that's not what we see in the past. This is going to turn into permanent supportive housing, and I just don't like the way that they're representing themselves by using affordable housing in order to get what they want, which is permanent supportive housing. It's just not... Do you really want to deal with a organization?
Thank you. I'm sorry, the time is up, but thank you for your comments.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jane Rand. I'm a resident on this side of Euclid, and Pathways of Hope is a couple blocks from my home, and they've been great neighbors. I would like to commend our council for stepping up and doing the right thing, making the wise decision to provide an opportunity for housing. Yes, affordable housing, and it so happens that permanent supportive housing is a subcategory of affordable housing, so I don't believe there have been any lies. More than a 40-year history in this community, and you know, I know that you've all met with the director. You know, you're familiar with what Dave Gillanders does and what that group does, not only in our city, but in other cities. And for all the people that came up earlier and talked about the issues that they have with having a hard time with people who aren't housed, being in community parks, well, this is the solution. So you've come to a good solution, and I appreciate you doing that. The real reason I'm here, I'm in the Active Transportation Committee, and I just wanted to highlight that we have a meeting tomorrow, a regularly scheduled meeting, at 5:00 PM here in the council chamber, and I'd like to invite the community that wants to give input about, because one of our agenda items is about the downtown transportation plan. We're trying to find ways to make it safer for people to bike and walk and skateboard and wheel and get around in our downtown. And so this is a great opportunity. It's a real friendly environment if you want to come to. It's not as formal as this when you come to an ATC meeting, and you're very much welcome to give input, and the ATC members will be very open to hearing what you have to say. So I'd like to encourage people who can at 5:00 PM tomorrow, come right back here and join us.
Thank you for the announcement. Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen and council members and ladies. My name is Jesse Gennara, and I'm just here to, once again, request for you folks to give me my trailer back. I've been getting conflicting answers from people within the city organization. I was requested to have an impound hearing by Brooke Weisman. While requesting that hearing, Officer Betty called me back. Instead of giving you the supplied information or requested information, I was questioned on the phone why I did this, why I did that. I don't need to be questioned about it. Just supply the information. Basically, we had an impound hearing, and it was basically an argument between Corporal Betty and myself and about five other people in the lobby in the window. There was an actually established impound hearing within California Vehicle Code. The email chief, Danny Fokes, the information later. I didn't have time to write it down. But there are established policies and procedures within the California Vehicle Code regarding vehicle impound, regarding people's inability to pay, all these situations. When I requested this meeting with Betty, I also said I need, you know, copies of the tickets, and I need help paying because I'm homeless. Copies of the tickets were not in the Fullerton Police DMV database. Nothing was ever said about the help. But basically, in this meeting, Corporal Betty stated that there must be a glitch in the system, why these tickets were not reported on the trailer. Well, sir, I can't accept that because there was a man right directly behind me that had the exact same problem happened that same day. Requesting to speak to higher authority, I was denied. And at the time, I was, I could not help but not get upset. I mean, I was blamed. Now, I invited Kelly Fritzl to come to the meeting. She was late. She didn't attend, but she came afterwards and made a statement that Pticket was contracted by the city. Well, I contracted Pticket and requested information on that. The person's name is Sergio Martinez, customer service manager. Great guy, nice to talk to, but didn't have the answer. Said he would call me back. Called Kelly in the interim. Kelly told me that the city of Fullerton does not have to report MCC violations, only CBC. Well, Kelly, I can't believe that because I received tickets back to back, same day, minutes apart on my truck and trailer. Truck was reported, trailer was not. And I can't understand why you're ticketing the towed vehicle, not the tow vehicle. Okay? Consistent focused effort on my trailer. Being that said, I contacted Sergio back at Pticket, and he stated, point blank, and I had him repeat himself, was DMV does not record parking tickets for trailers. You know, guys get his job, he got me to calm down. Later that night at church, Bill comes up and says, hey, man, three more guys just had their motorhomes impounded for the same thing. Why are you telling me this, and then yet motorhomes? Okay, there's a conflict here. I contacted DMV. Ms. Sulladat, she's a Southern California Regional Manager. She said, no, cities are to report all citations, and that's also written in the California Vehicle Code. The processing, the ticket agency and the processing agency, they have a procedure also to follow, which were never followed. I'm sorry, but thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
If the gentleman can come back up, I'd like to ask him a simple question, if I may. He was at the previous meeting. I know that the police chief was kind enough as to offer him all manner of assistance. Did you take him up on that offer, sir?
Sir, what was offered to me was the wording of, you're not in this alone, you're not by yourself. I will look into it tomorrow. I will pull up folder, and I should be able to help you. I will call you back tomorrow. No phone calls after repeated attempts to call him. That's part of, you know, I'm stuck sleeping on the street, guys, you know. Tickets were never reported in a four-year time span, but yet you're required by California Vehicle Code to do so.
No, sir, I understand the ticket portion and your trailer issue.
Now, the issue was...
I'm asking if you took him up on the offer of his assistance.
There were no offers made, sir. There were no offers made, other than Ms. Fritzl wanting to put me into a shelter. My problem is I'm wanting to go back.
That's not an offer, sir?
That was an offer, but I didn't take it. But I was off...
You didn't take it?
Hold on, please. I was on, I was supposed to leave yesterday to go to Maryland. All this information's been verified by my brother-in-law and everybody else that I was to leave yesterday to get out of here. Because I've been 58 years in Fullerton. Great memories. My grandparents taken me to the waiting pool at Hillcrest Park, okay? Picking walnuts in the trees. I'm gonna leave Fullerton with bad memories, bad taste in my mouth, and I didn't want that. But it's got to have to escalate, because I'll be back east. I mean, Brooke's ready to go, too. So we need a resolution. I need my trailer back. I'm supposed to move there. What am I going to take my stuff to Maryland on or in? I was packing my trailer up so I could leave. That was my mode of transportation. I have no money to buy a trailer or rent another trailer. What do I do? Put it on my back? My truck's full. I mean, everything I own. I had a shop with the Fullerton business in it for years, behind Kennedy's Automotive. Okay, like I said, I've been here a long time. But there's a lot of other issues in interplay. I'm not here to bitch at anybody or anything else, but the procedures and how it's been handled is wrong. There is written code in the California Vehicle Code on how to do these things. Also, there's an appeals process that I was never told of. The impound hearing, you guys need to change that and give a person a piece of paper to sign by the officer acknowledging the impound hearing. Don't wait for them to throw their hands up in the air and walk away when they have, nobody's ever been told about an impound hearing. They have to wait to get a piece of letter in the mail. Half the time, the people's addresses don't match. They never get that information. They lose their possessions. Comes into your forfeit aperture problem or asset forfeiture. You know, it's like, and then there's also calling City Hall, asking if there's a higher authority. I was told no. The chief of police is... Wrong. There's an appeals process, Orange County Superior Court, also.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Fritzl, we do have contact information for this gentleman?
Yes, we do, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Hallstrom. If there are any more speakers, please line up on the north wall. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, city council and staff. My name is Jensen Hallstrom. First and foremost, I would like to extend my gratitude towards council and Eric Wen of the Parks and Rec Commission for entrusting me with a seat on that commission with my recent appointment. Very excited and honored to serve the community that I've grown up in by trying my best to provide my unique knowledge and perspective on Fullerton Parks, Trails programs, and open spaces. So I just wanted to thank you all for that first. Also, I would like the city to thank the city for its ongoing efforts towards preserving and protecting open spaces, such as the recent removals of bike jumps and trails near the Brea Dam reservoir. I understand it's a very contentious issue with, you know, some bike users who have been using those jumps for, you know, since they were kids, and it's a really complex issue. But I understand that it is the Army Corps of Engineers' land and their policies that the city is just, you know, enforcing. So I hope that those tensions between, you know, city staff and those bike users are eased at some point and some sort of, you know, solution is found. But other than that, I would like to inform the council of a particular 100-foot-tall and most likely century-old eucalyptus tree that's growing along Fullerton Creek, just upstream of Acacia Park. This tree, over the past two years, has very suddenly, most of its canopy has died back, and now there are thousands and thousands of pounds of limbs hanging nearly 100 feet above Fullerton Creek Road. Was there this morning. There are bicyclists, you know, mothers with their babies in strollers under this tree. I think it probably should have, is a great risk that I wish was dealt with sooner, but it's been nearly two years now that this incredibly dangerous tree's been standing. And I noticed that recently it has an X spray painted on the trunk to indicate its removal. I called the landscape supervisor for Fullerton, Phil Kaiser, and asked when the removal would happen, and for some reason, he told me that he doesn't know. It could be tomorrow, it could be today, is what he told me. I don't understand. I have some more questions about its removal and possibly repurposing the lumber. I hope to speak with some of you a little further about this.
Thank you for your comments, and welcome to the Park and Rec Committee.
Thank you.
Take care. Mr. Gamble. Flip a coin.
Pardon me?
Just kidding. Go ahead.
Oh, what'd you say? I didn't hear you say...
Good evening.
Oh, good evening. Oh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Curtis Gamble. I'm an activist for the homeless and the veterans, and today I would like to speak about the Fullerton Safe Parking Program. A safe parking program can give homeless individuals and families a safe, legal place to park and sleep 24 hours, seven days, a week, 365 days a year. A safe parking program can include cars, trucks, RVs, vans, shipping containers. It's time that the city of Fullerton partner with Mary's Kitchen, 517 East Struck Avenue, Orange, for a 24-hour, seven days a week, 365 days a year, safe parking program. Although, Mary's Kitchen has been asked by the city of Orange to move from the city of Orange SB2 industrial by right zone for emergency shelters. Mary's Kitchen, Gloria Seuss, president, CEO, is looking for a new location in case a possible lawsuit fail against the city. The county of Orange, the OCTA bus drivers, our veterans, the public, the city of Fullerton can join in helping to relocate Mary's Kitchen to one of the following two, one of the following two locations in the SB2, in the emergency shelter industrial by right zones. The industrial zones are, one, the Goodman Logistics Center, Fullerton, 2001 East Orange Thorpe Avenue, Fullerton, California. Number two is Bridges at Kramer's Place, 1,000 North Kramer Place, Anaheim. The safe parking program should be funded via the $16 million from the American Rescue Act funds slash vouchers. These emergency housing vouchers are provided to help assist those who are, who have experienced homelessness, at risk of homelessness, recently homeless, are fleeing, are attempting to flee domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking, or human trafficking. Thank you for your time, and again, oh, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
And while we're waiting for our last speaker to come to the microphone, if anybody on Zoom would like to speak next, please raise your hand virtually.
Hello, my name is Bernard, and I am a Fullerton resident. As a kid, I used to love the Scholastic Book Club and especially ordering the Guinness Book of Records. This was way before the interwebs and smartphones. So for me, it was an endless source of entertainment, as I would just make up random backstories of the various record holders and be endlessly entertained. I was so stoked because I brought home to Fullerton the Guinness Book of Records for the world's longest mohawk, a record that requires zero talent or skill. And now, some kid can make up stories about Fullerton, the city I love, but for only less than a week. The previous record was three feet. I set it at 45 inches, but a guy in Minnesota just crushed me at 54 inches. Thing is, he's significantly taller, taller than me, so I'd have to grow my hair several inches on the floor to reclaim the title. No, thank you. I'm sorry, Fullerton. We had it for three days, but will no longer make the book. It's unfortunate that society associates femininity with hair. Even if you can't give hair, consider making a charitable monetary contribution to them. They make hairpieces for folks with medical hair loss and no charge to the recipient. They do good work. Shout out to Suzanne at HairWeShare.org. Go Bruins!
Thank you. Seeing no more speakers in the chamber, we can receive some Zoom calls.
We have one hand raised. Jane Reifer?
Yes, hello. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I was looking at the Planning Commission video recently to see what I could glean about an experience I had at a recent, what I thought was a public hearing for the Goodman Logistics item regarding the city water well easement and a few other things. I'd had a number of questions, and I had a very surprising experience. I asked several questions that I thought were substantive questions about the map from the current proposed amendment compared with the map from the original agreement. It was the development agreement, which I do recall that when the Planning Commission originally saw it, they saw it only just a few hours before the date that they were meeting originally. So I know they hadn't felt like they had studied it properly at the time.
Yes, I'm sorry. I failed to intervene soon enough, but that item is agendized this evening. You'll need to speak at that time.
Okay, but so here's what I'm speaking about. As I was doing this research to find out why my questions were not answered at this meeting, it had a pretty aggressive response from a commission member, and the chair valiantly attempted to have... the chair valiantly attempted to have my questions answered, but was kind of overtaken, I guess, by this aggressive, uh, commission member. My questions were not answered before the vote. Uh, when I went back to look at the video recently, I discovered that the public hearing had never opened. And so my comments were taken as-
I'm sorry, again, you, you're dealing with the materiality from that meeting.
So what I'm asking is-
We're going, that's a discussion item number 15.
Let me shift the materiality and what I would like to know is if that meeting can be pulled from today's agenda because there was not a public hearing conducted at the planning commission meeting. I should have left it at that and I'm sorry. So that's what I would like to, uh, ask.
All right. Thank you. We've, we've heard that. I appreciate that.
Oh, and may I also confirm with you that it's done? I'm actually out of town at a funeral and I would like to know whether I need to be away from my family for the next couple of hours and attend this public hearing, which I think is invalid, or whether it will be pulled. So may I know whether it can be pulled?
This is the first item to be discussed following our consent calendar. So it wouldn't be two hours.
And there are no more Zoom comments.
All right, we will, uh, bring the discussion back to the council then at this time. And first of all, Mr. Acting City Manager, is there anything that you care to address, based on the speakers and the public?
Uh, nothing on the speakers, however, I'd like to, uh, let people know that, uh, at 6:00 PM tomorrow at the Public Works Yard, they're having a, uh, community forest event where we're selecting the types of trees to plant in the, um, roadways, uh, in between the sidewalks and the street. And if people would like to participate in that and give ideas for what type of trees to be planted or, uh, historic trees, or just be part of that conversation, they can go there tomorrow and there's more information on our website about the meeting.
Thank you. Any reports from any other members of staff? Seeing, oh, Ms. Fritzel.
Regarding our homeless, um, concerns, we do have two new homeless case managers that are city employees. They will be operating within the city five days a week, so we're upping our game. And they can be contacted at 714-738-6562 and either Mario or Eric can start, you know, being out in the Pacific Drive area to help out.
Thank you for that information. Appreciate it. Seeing no other reports, uh, we'll bring the discussion to the council. First, council reports. Mr. Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Limited council today. I want to first, uh, thank Bernard for giving, uh, our city three glorious days of, uh, recognition. It's unfortunate that, uh, it was only three days, but, uh, thank him for that. I had some concerns, sir, over, uh, existing memorial at Hillcrest Park, the World War II Memorial. The painted names are beginning to fade, ironically cruel, since the memorial actually reads to forget them would be cruel to their spirit. Those names are literally being forgotten. That's unacceptable for Fullertonians who paid the ultimate sacrifice in service of their country. We're often so quick to build memorials yet so lazy about their upkeep and the importance of their longevity for future generations. So I urge my fellow council members this evening, our staff and our residents, to not forget their sacrifice on the altar of freedom and let's right this wrong immediately. Another word about vaccinations as well, for the first time since January, COVID cases are rising and once more in all 50 states with the new Delta variant spreading nationally. How this simple and sound medical procedure has become weaponized is, uh, mind-numbingly puzzling at this point. Calling a lifesaving vaccine a Fauci-ouchie is silly, both because it rhymes for the sake of childish comfort and because it only serves to keep us trapped in what seems like our forever pandemic home. If freedom is an important component to your life, perhaps consider your neighbors or your fellow countrymen. Get vaccinated so we can all move past wearing these masks. Another reminder, sir, about our current confluence of, uh, climate change, water conservation, a severe drought, California's wildfire season is seemingly longer than ever and we approach the month of August. It's important to remember then 2020 alone, five of the largest wildfires in our state's history happened in the month of August and September. Temperatures are the hottest on record, so our electrical grid for certain will be tested daily. The dust bowl of the 1930s and its resulting economic loss contributed to the Great Depression and started the massive migration from America's west, uh, from the Midwest and the South. Our current mega drought could mirror those catastrophic economic impacts. Fullerton and the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California have the great benefit of advancements in capturing and storing water. However, we will need to continue to be mindful of the fact that water is life and work not to waste it, both as individuals and as a community. Sir, this, uh, this weekend marks National Parents Day. In celebration of this observance, Mr. Mayor and Council, please allow me the opportunity to tell you the story of Guo Gongtang. His tale is as much about a father's hope as it is about a parent's love. 24 years ago, Guo's then, uh, two-year-old son was, uh, abducted outside of their family home in China's Shandong province. Guo quit his job, spent the next two dozen years and all of his family fortune scouring China in search for his son. He traveled over 31, uh, 310,000 miles, wearing out 10 different motorcycles in the process. That'd be the equivalent of going from California to New York over a hundred times. Indeed, in hopes of finding, uh, someone that would recognize his son, Guo rode throughout China with a flag displaying a photo of the young man. Many times he had to beg for gas money. Oftentimes he sacrificed eating a meal so he could spend more time on the road. In his nomadic search, he chased every tip, exhausted every lead, slept on the bridges, never quit looking for his son. His efforts actually inspired the Chinese Police Department, who also want to dedicate themselves to finding his kidnapped son. Earlier last week, after over 24 years, advancements in DNA technology and continued police investigation allowed a father to reunite with his now 26-year-old son. What's not lost on me, Mr. Mayor and Council, is that while many things are taken for granted for in our society, faith in all its many forms should not be. It is oftentimes a step where you can't see stairs and more often than not, it certainly proves that it works. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Zara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, good evening. Uh, I just want, first of all, I'd like to wish, um, our Muslim community a very happy and blessed Eid al-Athha. It is the, uh, festival of sacrifice. It marks the end of pilgrimage to Mecca, uh, and it is one of the, um, uh, most celebrated festivals. It is a four-day celebration of, uh, family and, uh, and festivities. And, uh, so, uh, to all of the Muslims in our community, uh, may it be bring, uh, hope and blessings to all of you. Uh, I also want to remind, uh, folks that this, uh, Saturday, we will have the, uh, grand reopening of our museum. Uh, and it is at, at 6 o'clock, the reception, and it will be a wonderful exhibit called The Green Book, uh, that, uh, um, really talks about the, uh, the, uh, Ja- Black Jazz Players in, uh, in the South as they went from, uh, place to place using the book, uh, The Green Book as a guide. Um, and it's, uh, just a really wonderful exhibit put together by the, uh, board, uh, so kudos to them. It is free to, uh, past members. Uh, if you've ever had a membership with the museum, you can, uh, come in for free. It is $20, uh, for adults and $10 for kids. Uh, feel free to break everybody. And I encourage folks who are, um, are able to, uh, possibly sponsor, um, a, a, a friend or a neighbor, uh, or maybe a, uh, an organization to bring more people to, uh, enjoy this, uh, exhibit in the museum. Uh, so, uh, thank you very much. Um, as far as, uh, I want to just, uh, make a few, uh, just points about park maintenance. I hope that we can, um, really invest in our maintenance, uh, and in our public works so that we can enjoy, uh, clean and maintain, well-maintained parks. This is an ongoing issue. We invest quite a bit of money in our parks, uh, only to have them run down quickly. Um, I know Woodcrest Park is some, uh, a, a pride of that neighborhood. It is my neighborhood, uh, but oftentimes we see, um, you know, trash quickly accumulate, graffiti quickly come, comes back, the, uh, the, the toilets and the facilities are, uh, quickly, uh, damaged. So, uh, I urge everyone to take pride in their parks. Uh, if you want to join one of our, um, uh, adopt a park programs, uh, please do so. Uh, and then, um, and then hopefully we can, when we look at the ARPA funding, I hope that we can, uh, see, uh, value in investing in, uh, park maintenance. I know in the past, we used to have an ancillary, uh, team of, uh, that would go around and, 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 uh, make sure that, uh, our, our streets are cleaned up, uh, properly and maintained and our parks and so on. And I think, I hope we can get, come back to that. So that's a discussion for another time. But, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly. Um, I wanted to provide a short addendum to that, uh, presentation on PFAS by the Orange County Water District earlier. Our primary well field for the city of Fullerton, which does provide more than three quarters of our water, is located in the city of Anaheim. It's on La Palma Avenue in Anaheim. And progress is being made on another filtration system, which is being constructed there now. It's, uh, at about a third complete stage, about one-third. So that should go online sometime down the road as well. So once again, I just wanted to express appreciation for the Orange County Water District's quick response to try to deal with this threat to our water system. We could wind up in the same boat as our friends in Yorba Linda if we didn't move on this, which all 13 of their wells have been shut down because of this problem. And luckily, they have a solution on the way as well. And the other item that I wanted to cover this evening is to give an early announcement, really, of a new sister city relationship, uh, working with the Sister City Association and Mike Oates, who is the, uh, chairman of that. We've received, uh, certification from the, from the city of Tolo, Italy, T-O-L-L-O, Italy. And this would combine with, right now, our sister cities, Morelia, Mexico, Yangin, South Korea, and Fukui, Japan. Uh, this sister city relationship will have the added advantage of sharing with us one of our most prized, uh, items in this city, which is our Mediterranean-style climate. So Tolo, Italy has that as well. And there are many other, um, reasons, natural affinities that we have with this area. It's in the Abruzzo region in Italy. It's about halfway down the boot on the Adriatic coast. And that announcement will be happening formally on September 22nd. September 22nd notably is, uh, Tommy Lasorda's birthday. Uh, Tommy Lasorda, who passed in January of this year, was a 68-year resident of the city of Fullerton. Uh, his father was born in Tolo, Italy, which is one of the reason for pairing these two. And the city is going to help to support private, many private individuals and businesses who are leading the way to have an obs- to observe and to celebrate Tommy Lasorda's birthday on September 22nd. Happens to be a Wednesday, unfortunately, but, uh, I, some areas of interest will be timed to coincide with that. So we invite, uh, business owners who want to participate in this, or anyone else who has good ideas for contributing to this day. It'll be a day designed to honor Tommy Lasorda and we'll also be talking about this, uh, new sister city relationship that we have with Italy. And with that, we are now at our consent calendar items. And I had requests to pull item number three, number six, and number 14. Uh, we had earlier announced that items number 10 and 12 had been pulled by staff. So I would, at this point, entertain a motion on the balance.
I'll move the balance. I'll second, sir.
Right, moved and seconded, uh, so we'll take a roll call vote on that.
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Passes 3-0.
Okay. And gentlemen, what is your preference? Do we handle those three consent items now, or do we kick them to the back of the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. We'll start with item number three. I think that was you, uh, Councilmember Jung?
Uh, that, that was my-
Oh, I'm sorry. I got it mixed up. Sure.
Uh, so, so yeah, Mr. Mayor, I pulled this item because it is the, um, it's the finance, third quarter financial report, and I just wanted to ask, uh, um, our Director of Administrative Services, Alice Chang, to maybe give a, just a brief, um, discussion on this because, uh, there are, I know that our Acting City Manager last, uh, council meeting, uh, had announced that we have a $4 million surplus, but I just wanted to make sure that we clarify a, some misconceptions that I've been, uh, uh, getting from members of the public who have asked me, what, you know, so do we have now money or, or do we not have money? And, and how does that translate to this year's budget, um, uh, as well? So this is from last year's budget, so there was a surplus in the third quarter, quarter, but not overall. We're still not in the clear. So if you can just clarify a little bit of that.
Um, Kelly, do you mind loading the presentation? Thank you. Thank you. There you go. Thank you. So, um, I think what might be easiest to start with is the table, which is on the project, on the screen right now, which is included in the agenda report. So in that first column there, we have, um, the budget as adopted for fiscal year 2021. And please keep in mind that this budget was adopted at the very beginning, at the onset of the pandemic. So, um, a lot of the projections that, and the, uh, analysis that went in at that time is indicative and reflected in those adopted budget numbers. That adopted budget number also included, if I am not mistaken, the, um, the budget balancing measures of $7.9 million that City Council had also, also approved at the time the budget was adopted. So, um, with that, if you, as you can see from the adopted budget numbers, we were projected with the $7.9 million of budget balancing measures, um, ending with a neutral operating surplus or deficit, meaning no surplus or deficit, and then an ending fund balance of about $10.5 million, leaving, um, sufficient balance for contingency reserves, estimated about 9.8, and a little bit left over for available unassigned fund balance for city council designation. Um, as of the third quarter financial update, um, staff did project out through the end of fiscal year now that, um, while we are still working through month-end close, we are, we've just recently closed the month of April. Our June financial statements are actually not officially closed until the November, December timeframe, once our external financial audit is completed. But we are able to see, um, year-end projections for all labor payroll costs have already been incorporated in that projected budget, along with projected operating expenses, um, and, um, all the revenue projections are also built in. So based on the initial projections for year end, um, we are looking at a operating surplus of about $4 million. That number may be increased or decreased slightly at, at the time the CAFRA is issued and that will be presented sometime in December of this calendar year. So with an operating surplus of about, um, plus or minus $4 million and then net transfers in of about $220,000 that we anticipate from the Traffic Safety Fund, our net change in fund balance will be about $4.2 or $4.3 million. With that, we are anticipated to have an ending general fund, fund balance of about $4.5 million, leaving sufficient, um, amount to cover the $9.6 million in contingency reserve and then available unassigned fund balance of between $4 to $5 million is what we're projecting at this time. Um, as indicated in the agenda report, um, we'll be seeking city council direction either at that December meeting, or should city council like to designate use of that unassigned fund balance sometime in December? Or at any time in a subsequent meeting, we'll be taking direction from city council as to how to designate the uses of that available unassigned fund balance. Um, but I believe some of the questions are, what does this mean for '21, '22? Is that correct, councilmembers Zara? So with that, let me switch to this next table, which is actually not included in the presentation, in the agenda report, but I thought it might, um, put some context into what that impact of that beginning surplus in our, uh, available unassigned fund balance would do to fiscal year '21, '22. So the third column there, under the fiscal year '21, '22, is what we had projected in terms of our adopted budget. Um, and that last column shows the difference. You can see that our adopted budget, we are, we were projected to begin the year with available fund balance of about $10.5 million. And with the adjustment, our beginning fund balance would then be about $14.5 or $14.482 million. This actually does not have any impact on the general fund structural deficit. The revenues are still as, um, right now, um, based on best information that we have available, we are projecting revenues- we are projecting revenues for fiscal year '21, '22 at about $101 million. And then expenditure with the $3.8 million of vacancy savings that was adopted with the budget, expenditures of about $107 million, thereby leaving a deficit of about $6 million. What that does is, what we're still projecting with this adjusted beginning fund balance is that we would end with a general fund fund balance of $8 million. And even with that, our contingency reserve would not be sufficient. We'd be short about $2.6 million. Are there any other specific questions related to this agenda item?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of follow-up questions. So now the projections, so this is really underprojecting, and then I know there was COVID, so it was hard to gauge some of the revenue that we were getting. So we, there was an underprojection of property tax and then also of sales tax. Am I correct in that?
That's correct. So if you look at that last column there, we did just show the variance between the adopted budget and what we are projecting for year-end. That first bolded line under that revenue line is the total overall variance between what was adopted and where we are projected to end the year. But if you look at the individual lines underneath that, you have all the different revenue components for general fund, property tax, we are projecting to come in about $3.1 million above what we had adopted back in June of 2020. And sales tax is also projected to come in stronger at about $1.6 million. However, the bulk of those increases are actually offset by under-budgeted, revenue projections coming in less than budgeted for other taxes, which is primarily our transient occupancy tax, and parks and recreation revenue, and then fines and penalties, and then obviously interest income, obviously is very low, given our low interest rate environment right now. That being said, our projections overall were about $1.5 million less than what we're, our adopted budget, at time of budget adoptions, our projections were low by about $1.5 million. The bulk of that, however, is actually due to residual receipts from the wind down of some successor agency projects. We received residual receipts actually in May of this calendar year, in the amount of about $1.3 million that we were not initially anticipating. So if we look overall, general fund revenues, our adopted budget was fairly close, but we did have unanticipated one-time residual receipts revenues from wind down of successor agency projects that kind of contributed to that $1.5 million variance.
And, and one, one more thing. Now, how, considering now that, and this was during COVID, and I think this is also a testament to a lot of the, the work that our staff did in helping small businesses stay open. We, we got a lot of businesses that we, we helped for as much as we could. But what is the likelihood of having another sort of large variance like this in the first quarter of, of the, the next fiscal year? And then the reason I'm asking this is because we are going to be making some rather serious decisions, and there are proposed cuts, and that's going to affect our staffing levels, going to affect our services. And so with a large projection like this, this, or variance like this, this could really affect in a major way these decisions. So one, I'd like, I'd like us to have this discussion brought back when we discuss as well, or keep it in mind when we discuss the, in August, the ARPA funding and also the proposed cuts. But how likely is it that there are going to be some more variances like this?
I would say that they would be likely, and we were just starting to reopen after the pandemic. If I had a crystal ball, I would be able to answer these questions. But the reality is, we don't know what's going to happen. As Councilmember Jung had mentioned earlier this evening, there's additional variants of the COVID virus. As we enter the fall and the winter, we don't know what the state will do in terms of mandated closures again, or if we're going to continue to stay on the trajectory of full recovery. It's, I think it's too early to tell. I think we were very balanced in our fiscal year '21, '22 revenue estimates. We were conservative, but I think we, we were projected a full kind of back to normalcy in terms of our revenue levels as of mid-year. So we thought we would kind of split the difference between a slow gradual reopening this summer into the winter, and then a full reopening in January.
All right, thank you very much. I have no further questions.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
Director Chang, while we have you here, what is the best practices percentage amount for contingency reserve?
The GFOA, I think, recommends on a ballpark number at about a 17% contingency reserve. Our city, cities, general fund contingency reserve policy is a minimum of a 10%, with city striving to achieve closer to a 17%. But that percentage may increase or decrease depending on the agency, depending on the risk factors that that particular agency may be faced with.
So we're several percentages off what's recommended best practices at this point?
Per GFOEs.
Thank you very much.
I've always personally supported an 18% level, but in an abnormal year such as last year, that's what reserves are for. But like you said, there are so many unknowns at this point, even inflation, whether or not that's going to persist and get even higher. It could have a very large effect on a number of these categories. So thank you for the explanation that, as I mentioned earlier, when I spoke with the head of the, of the fire union, he was very concerned at the amount of differential that developed here. I don't know whether you've had discussions with them or not.
I did. I was able to send him the agenda report earlier this week as it was published, but there was no specific follow-up questions that I received.
I'd be interested in knowing whether we have ongoing dialogue on, on that basis. I'd appreciate that. All right, well, thank you. On this item then, item number three, I would entertain a motion.
Do we have to do public comments?
I didn't ask if anyone from the public cares to speak to this. Thank you. Seeing no takers?
There are no Zoom comments.
And no Zoom calls. Oh, okay.
Good evening, Council. Dan Lancaster, President of Fullerton Firefighters Association. First off, thank you very much for our mayor, the council members present, Ellis, for actually responding back, communicating with the employees, the firefighters, exactly what's been going on. $4.4 million, that's a huge deal when you are a Fullerton employee who is overworked to the nth degree in every department. I'm looking at my fellow employees, excuse me, our police officers, our chief officers, our council, everybody who collects a paycheck for the city of Fullerton is going above and beyond. It's my understanding that a lot of these surpluses the past two years, I believe it was $3.2 million last year, $4.4 million this year, is because of our vacancies. Your employees are taking on a huge burden. First responders, police officers, firefighters, pandemic, doing way more work than, than we can almost sustain right now. For our finance department to come to you after a budget has been proposed, agendized, and voted on and passed with two, five, and 10% cuts that directly impact our ability to do our job, public safety first and foremost, is irresponsible. We had an academy set to start in two weeks to fill much-needed vacancies for our first responders to, we're at the bare minimum right now. We are filling almost 100 positions a month with mandatories, forced hires, people telling them, you don't get to go home today. Sorry, you don't get to go on vacation. We needed those bodies. We had a two, five, and 10% cut pending with your fire department that stopped that hiring process. Dead in its tracks. We're only as good as the information that we're given, and our finance department, I feel like our finance department has more people than your fire department, just watching them walk in. That's unacceptable for us. We need to hold our finance department accountable. If they need more staff, give them the staff. These are the people that need to make the decision so you can make better decisions, so we can do our job. We have been on the front lines of this pandemic from day one, and kudos to the men and women out there, our police officers, our firefighters, our public works, everybody who collects a Fullerton paycheck, kudos to you, because you literally got decimated and you show up to work every single day. These are the men and women that deserve your support. If there's a surplus based on employee vacancies, that's your responsibility to let this community know that you're going to give back to the employees that show up each and every single day. Let this community know that you have our back, that you're going to make sure that if a water main breaks, or if a, another drive-by JP23 happens on a Monday after a holiday, that people are going to be there. This is what we need. This is what we expect. Just two, two more seconds, I greatly appreciate it. You have a very hard job to do. You have very hard decisions to do. We're only as good as the council's support working down. Our city manager, everybody on our finance team, our HR, Laura, she, she grinds through more than, than anybody I've ever seen.
I do have to draw the line at something.
I know, 100%. But thank you for your time. Thank you for your efforts. We're only as good as the information, we just need better right now. So thank you.
I wanted to add one more thing, though. You're right, there have been people pressed into extra duty, no question about it. But I hear regularly from the residents that service levels have been down as well across the board with city departments. So in part, that's where this year, with all the unknowns, I do have to say that our service delivery has suffered a fair amount. And what we'd be wanting to do next year is get back to a more full-service situation. That's going to take a lot of different moves. But one of the things, as we looked at in context, next year is another very large hill to try to get over as far as expense-wise. A large part of that is public safety pension costs. They're very large. And so in terms of working to maintain optimal levels of staff, that's a real challenge going forward.
100%.
But thank you for your comments here this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, now I would, oh, Zoom, still none? Okay, motion on this item?
They're moved.
I will second that then, and Madam Clerk?
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
And Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Passes 3-0.
And item, item number six next was pulled.
Yes, thank you. That was also an item I pulled because I, I wanted to see if we can take, get a little explanation on why we are, at a time when we have, you know, some fiscal issues, that we are hiring an interim director of human, an interim director of, of our community development. You know, this is a very short-term position, and I would prefer if we have our current acting director be in that position until the new city manager hires their full team. I, I see this amount of money that could be potentially spent, I think it's about $84 an hour, $76,000, is it about $76,000, something like that, that maybe could be spent on more planners, so that we can facilitate at this time more, more services to our community. So that's, that's really what I'd like to know from our acting city managers, why you have made this choice.
I made the choice because we are short-staffed, we have a number of projects in community and economic development that we need to move forward, we have development fees, we have a housing element, we have housing projects, we've got the Goodman site, we've got code enforcement permit issues, and we need a top-quality person to help us do that, and we need as many buyers as possible. So I felt like that we needed to do that, because the, the new city manager who comes on board, I want them to be able to choose who the permanent person is for that. So I wanted an interim in between to carry us through in that period. And I've mentioned that to council members all the way along through this process and told them that I was going to do this, and so I moved forward and done it. And we're here today to, to ratify that, and if the council votes yes, I have persons showing up tomorrow to start work.
Okay, appreciate that. Would you be able to give us a little bit of information about the person you've selected, Mr.?
We've had four really good candidates that we interviewed. The person we went with is Greg Post. He was the head of Community and Economic Department at Laguna Beach, also Dana Point, and I think the other one was Seal Beach. So he's got a very hands-on experience, he can step right in. He's been a director in all those places, and he also can do, do the work as well. So he's, he's top-line, ready to go.
I, I would, the mayor is not here, but I would ask that if we can vote on these two resolutions separately. Mr. Mayor, if, if we can vote on these two, two resolutions separately, I would appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Sure. Mr. Jung?
Certainly with the budget that's been passed by the majority of council, I would caution both our staff and our community to, to not divide one another, with all due respect to Captain Lancaster, God bless our fire department, but I don't know that it's the finance department's fault that they don't know how to navigate through a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. We are all in this together. We're not going to row the same way, we're not going to get anywhere. So we hired an acting city manager, we've given him the authority to hire folks that he needs to get our city moving in the right direction. So it troubles me when things like this are questioned. We are all in the same boat, all of us. And I expect us to start rowing in the same direction. Maybe then, the efforts of some won't be so in vain. Thank you, sir.
Yes, Mr. Jung, I'd like to add my concerns about the nature of this as well, which are, that I believe our acting city manager has made this an interim director to allow what our more long-term city manager hire that we are anticipating would have an opportunity to choose that key member of staff for themselves. So even though it's a bit unusual to be seeking an interim manager in this area, I think, I believe that's the purpose for it. And that gives us certainly an opportunity to see what, what develops with this interim manager as well.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that. My, it was just my concern is that we do have a very competent deputy city community development director who has been managing this, and I, I felt that this amount of money could be spent on the actual services on the employees. I mean, I know that the goal is to increase the employee levels to, so that they can do the, the enormous amount of work, but I don't see why we should get an interim director and rather put this money into the actual service providers directly. So that's my, my, my opinion on this. It's certainly not one that is meant to divide, but merely, merely an opinion, as we all have our own opinions about how to manage this city.
If, if I could, if I would have known this, I would have waited till we had a full council here, so that we didn't have someone in the wings ready to go tomorrow. So this can be postponed, and we can bring it back when there's a full council, but I would appreciate it knowing about this ahead of time.
Sir, I'm not in support of that. Let's take the vote, sir.
Okay, yes, we will go ahead through the motions of a vote at least.
Public comment?
Oh, public comments on this item? Anyone who's interested? Seeing none?
And no Zoom.
Okay, no Zoom. All right, we'll bring it back and we'll.
And Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, just if I can ask that these two items, these two resolutions would be voted on separately, if that's okay with you? Because I do not, I am not opposed to the second item, but I would like to exercise my right to voting no on the first one.
Okay, I, I think it's a fair, a fair request to bifurcate. Go ahead.
We do need motions.
All right, I would move.
Move the item, sir.
Yeah, okay, I'll second that then.
And that, that was for the, sorry?
The first item.
The community and economic development?
Right, yes.
Okay. Where am I? Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
So that item fails, requires three affirmative votes to adopt the resolution. If the manager wishes to bring it back in two weeks for council deliberations, he could do so.
And item number two?
A motion for the interim HR director?
I'll make the motion.
Aye, second.
Same as last time. Okay, Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
And that item passes 3-0.
And we now have, uh, item number 14.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I ask that, uh, it be removed from the consent calendar so I could get a little bit further information on a park that obviously is so dear to so many in our community. Uh, we are spending in upwards of, uh, close to $900,000 on this park. Uh, one that certainly needs the, uh, the improvement that it's scheduled to receive. My concern is, uh, a couple of things, if you'll entertain me, sir. First and foremost, I'm, I'm concerned at the cost. It is a costly investment for what, uh, is described as meadow grass and proposed tree. I, I don't even know what that means. You know, my concern is that, is it cheaper to go to natural and recycled materials? Should that be considered? Uh, some architecture, some thought placed rather than, uh, generic park that's cookie-cutter to every other park that we may have. And if the park plan was more unique and more of a postcard park rather than the same-old, same-old, maybe we wouldn't have the, uh, problems that exist in it now. So I would like to, uh, get some more, uh, observation or thought from staff about, uh, this particular park proposal. And, uh, I'll await the answers accordingly. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and his council. Apologize for my attire. I wasn't planning on being here tonight. Uh, I believe we do have Alice Lawyer, um, on, in Zoom, but I'll take a stab at this to begin with, and hopefully Alice won't correct me too much. Um, this project has been around for many, many years. Um, Parks and Rec, um, spent, I think, three or four meetings with the community, um, to come to what the community wanted in the park. Um, so what the design is, is essentially a collaboration between the city and the residents as to what they wanted to see and be able to use at the park. Um, as I said, this project was planned, I don't know, three or four years ago, and for numerous reasons has been put on hold and delayed until we got to this part right right now. We did, um, apply for and did obtain CDBG funds, which will help offset the cost of this project. Um, certainly doesn't pay for it, but certainly offsets it. Um, I, if you have any other questions, ask about the basics.
Are you aware that if this, uh, item were carried forward, would, would there be any problem in terms, would that create any difficulties?
In what respect?
Uh, Councilmember Jung has said that he wants to, uh, identify, uh, more elements or more information on this project. And so whether we'd carry it over to another council meeting where we might have all five council members present?
Um, we are, we do have deadlines to spend the CGB, CDBG funding, but two weeks should not be an issue.
Okay, thank you. And if that's your preference, uh, Councilmember Jung, perhaps you could make a motion to that?
I, I certainly will, sir. I'd make a motion to table this matter until the, uh, August meeting. August, uh, 3rd, right? 3rd?
I'm staring at the city attorneys. I'm guessing he's going to say continue, not table, as a technical term of art.
Continue, it is.
But continue to August 3rd, yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may just get some clarity, um, from, uh, on, on what, uh, these two weeks could achieve as far as, I, I, I'm trying to understand, because this has been in the making for a long, long time. And the community's been waiting for this for a long time. It was, it went through all the process of community input. And, and I'm not sure what, um, what exactly we would be, um, achieving from delaying this two weeks.
Well, we need majority support, just as we did on the last item.
Right.
And it doesn't appear as though we would have majority support. So the carryforward might be necessary.
I see. Does this require, uh, more than three votes, or does this equal?
Requires three affirmative votes.
Three affirmative, okay.
The law requires resolutions, ordinances, and spending of money. Three affirmative votes from the bottom.
And personally, I would prefer to know that the council was comfortable with all these plans.
Yeah, one, one more thing I probably should indicate, perhaps to Mr. Jung's benefit. Uh, this appears to be the award of a construction contract, so if he introduces out new elements to it, that might affect that contract. You might want to work with staff about regarding that, because if you're suggesting changes can be worked within the contract, that would not delay the process.
I certainly appreciate the, uh, counsel. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
And with that, I'd ask if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak to this item?
Good evening, City Council and staff. Jensen Halstrom here. I would like to start off by acknowledging the, uh, long, uh, lengthy process through which this, um, design has gone through with the community, and, uh, that it would seem as any further delays, um, would, you know, basically undermine that long, uh, process. I would actually argue that, um, there are, uh, significant changes that should be made to the, to the design, which currently is actually quite, quite vague in some manner, uh, especially on the legend for the, uh, the rendered map. The landscape extent of the design shows nothing more than, um, uh, a vague landscape buffer, some meadow grass. And, uh, one part of the legend points to two symbols for trees, uh, with, uh, arrows, and it says, "proposed tree." I don't know if this plan really calls for just one singular proposed tree or, or maybe several, but, uh, it doesn't really seem that, uh, the landscape portion, which in a lot of cases should be the foundation of a park, uh, is, is really well-designed or even well-explained. I would, uh, propose that in, in designing and renovating our really, uh, precious park space, that we emphasize, uh, natural materials and resources rather than fabricated metal, uh, plastic materials. These are things that, you know, uh, kind of undermine the natural, uh, beautiful experiences that children can have in parks when they are only introduced to man-made, uh, objects, features, and materials. Uh, there's an idea for, uh, a type of park, uh, called, uh, natural playgrounds, natural playscapes. And the idea is actually, uh, more cost-effective. It's more, uh, creative, uh, more stimulating, uh, and memorable experience for children. It's basically using recycled natural materials such as trees, stumps, logs, uh, boulders, uh, soil berms, hills, and, uh, other features that, uh, are actually very unique, beautiful, and could be cheaper in some aspects. Uh, so I, I would also recommend that the council continue this item because since we, it is a large amount of money spent, it should be criticized and scrutinized. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, good evening. Eklun Nuncy, our resident, uh, and one of the community leaders that we are fighting for this park for so many, many years. And, uh, you're aware, Mayor, because you are, you know, for a long time in our council, Councilman Zara, Councilman Silva, that this is, you know, we have so many, uh, community meetings at Pacific Drive Elementary. Then finally, we got, you know, the approval of the park. Everybody was excited. We're going to start the construction, and then it came, COVID. Then we had the Hans Library. We push it because we want to be, you know, uh, maybe part of the project of the Hans Library. And we have so, so many pushbacks for our community. My daughter was in kindergarten. Now she's going to Nicholas. She's going to junior high. And we are advocating over and over and over for the park. And this, you know, a massive, a lot of community members, they came. A lot of our members there, they move out and they never enjoy the park. And we are keep pushing it over and over. Please, ma, our areas, we need parks. This is the, uh, area that have a lot of apartments. This is the only place that families that go enjoy a park. And we have the sign from the city for many months now. They're going to be a construction that we never see. And please, take in consideration our time as, uh, you, your neighbors. We have this meeting so many times. I know we, two weeks maybe will not make a difference, and you're seeing some details. But this is the details that we're around for the neighbors that we're going to be always in this park. The, the neighborhoods, the people around it, the people from Pacific Drive, all the families that we go. I don't know what more outreach we can do. If we say yes, it's been approved, it was going to be start, and now we're going to push back again. Please have in consideration our needs as a residents and neighbors of this park, that we want the construction. A lot of people call me, I don't know if they called you, Mayor, because this is a, you know, District 4, and they're, they want to see something get done for our area. Please have that in consideration. Thank you so much for your time.
Good evening again. Jose Trinidad Casaneda. Uh, so I was driving on Valencia Park when I noticed that there was a young, uh, Korean woman and her child at the playground. I'm just driving through, and, uh, I saw, uh, that there was a woman who most likely experiencing homelessness was smoking a crack pipe on the floor next to the bathroom, um, in the, in broad daylight. And so, um, I, I bring this up because, uh, this park, uh, is needed. Improvements are needed there. And whatever the council decides, I just want to, um, emphasize that the improvements at Woodcrest Park did help, um, to bring in the actual residents and neighbors that live in that area and, uh, dissuade, uh, some of the, uh, more negative elements, uh, that were previously there. And I hope that can continue to happen with this. So, uh, if you make any changes or if the, you know, current proposed, uh, park is approved, uh, that the work, uh, happens right away to dissuade some of the more, um, negative elements that are right in our faces. As you've heard, uh, the young children talk about, uh, people bathing naked at the bathrooms, and uh, I'm just, uh, hopeful that, that, uh, the Pacific Drive Park can be a notable part that, uh, people go to, uh, like they have been going to at Woodcrest. Um, and I just want to make a, a final point that, um, the park's, uh, master plan item that was brought up, uh, previously, that would have taken up a lot of funding that is, uh, you know, community residents asked to go directly into improving parks. So I don't see, um, too big of an issue with approving the total costs because, um, it's not, it's going directly into improvements rather than, um, uh, planning efforts and community engagement that, you know, so many residents have already been participating in. Thank you.
If I may indulge you one more time, I'd like to add on to your question. So, as the city attorney mentioned, if we do make changes to these plans, essentially the bids we received will be rejected, and we'll have to go back out to bid again. Um, that will also require going back to the, the Parks and Rec Commission, which we already did, um, for this project, and it was recommended by the Parks and Rec Commission. So, and then, of course, there's all the associated staff time and city expenses in rebidding, um, the project. Also point out that this, the, the bids came in lower than the, we estimated. And with prices, um, material prices and labor costs just going up daily, as we can see with the cost of our water pipes, they've gone up 20% over the last couple of months. Very hard to obtain materials. Although I can't guarantee it, um, I feel very strongly that the, anytime we rebid this project, I expect the prices to be, um, higher.
Well, I, what I'd like to do at this stage is second your motion, uh, Mr. Jung, because, you know, nearly a million dollars in expense, and I realize prices are climbing. But given that we already have the real estate, just the construction costs, you could actually construct three very nice homes, I think, for that amount of money. And so I think what you're questioning, uh, has some validity, and I think it really deserves to have a second look by the council. No Zoom calls. So we'll bring the item back, uh, for a vote. And I agree, two weeks delay doesn't seem like very much. And if we're confident that this is a good plan and that the costs can be validated, then I would assume that a majority council will approve this in two weeks, and there's no concern. But an attempt to analyze, you know, that, that old, uh, saying I, I learned from a, a good carpenter friend of mine, you know, measure twice and cut once. And so when we make the decision to pull the trigger on this expenditure, we've got to see that we're getting our money's worth. So I think that is a valid concern. And with that, is there any more discussion?
So the motion is to continue the item to the following meeting?
Till the, till the next meeting, yes. All right, seeing no more discussion, roll call vote.
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
No.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
City Attorney, when it's a two-to-one with no money involved, just to continue, the item passes?
It carried.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so that completes our consent, uh, calendar. And we are ready for item number?
16.
Item number 16. I was just going to explain, oh, well, yeah, we'll go to that. The recommendation by staff on item number 16 is to continue to August 3rd meeting, when all the city council members will attend the meeting to consider this item. So at the council's pleasure at this stage.
Such a motion should include the date and the ti, the time, sir.
Which it, yeah, that recommendation does.
No, it doesn't have the time.
Oh, you're right.
It would be 6:30 PM.
I'll, I'll move the recommendation.
Okay, and add 6:30 PM?
Uh, yes, at 6:30 PM.
Okay.
I'll second that, sir.
Moved and seconded, uh, so we're ready for a roll call vote. I don't know whether we require public comment at this stage.
Just on the continuance.
Okay, great.
Go for it.
And I see no hands raised and no one rushing to the microphone. So Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
And Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, item number 17, which is Goodman Logistics Center First Amendment to Development Agreement to Revise Waterwell Easement Public Benefit. And that's, uh, Kelly Fritzl.
Actually, Heather Allen.
I'm sorry, Heather.
Good evening, Mayor. Heather Allen, the city's planning manager. Uh, just a bit of, uh, brief background on this. Uh, the city council did approve the, um, entitlement for the Goodman Logistics Center project back in November of 2020. This is the redevelopment of the former Kimberly-Clark site. Uh, your first item, uh, on the agenda tonight was a presentation on PFAS. So one of the wells mentioned, um, in terms of providing the city's groundwater currently exists in an easement on, uh, the former Kimberly-Clark, now Goodman, site. Um, as part of the review of the project, the Public Works Department had requested that Goodman, um, offer to the city an expanded area to increase our easement area to the east of the existing well. That would allow us to have additional, uh, capability to maintain the well and address any, uh, any other treatment issues that may occur, um, at a later date. Based on, um, accommodating a variety of treatment options, we agreed upon a size of the property. Um, the, as, as we've, um, learned more about, uh, a preferred treatment scenario, um, as well as the cost of the land, uh, Public Works staff has, uh, determined that we need a less, uh, less of a large footprint for the easement area, and we, uh, approached the developer to amend this portion of the development agreement to reduce the cost that the city would pay to purchase the easement based on a proportional reduction of the square footage. So that's the item before you this evening. The developer is here, can answer any questions, and Public Works staff is here as well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions by council at this stage?
Mr. Mayor, uh, we had a couple of concerns from community members about the process, uh, and planning commission. Can we get some clarification about their concerns, please?
Certainly, yeah. City Attorney, are you?
Thank you.
Prepared to respond?
I'll be happy to respond. Um, I also received correspondence from Mr. Leslie and heard Mrs. Reifert, Ms. Reisford's comments. With regard to the public hearing process, I did research the issue. With regard to the public hearing process, I did research the issue. And Government Code Section 65010 indicates that the formal rules of procedure regarding the conducting of a public hearing do not necessarily apply. That with respect to the proper conducting of a public hearing, that there are three elements to it in order to proceed. One is that it must be properly noticed, and number two, there must be a fair opportunity to make comment. And then finally, to proceed with respect to any litigation, there must be actual prejudice. Under the circumstances, Ms. Allen may be able to comment regarding what actually occurred at the meeting, but appears to be properly noticed. The second question would be whether the public had the proper opportunity to address the issue, not the issue whether it was open or closed. That's not really consistent with 65010. And then finally, by your conducting your public hearing this evening, that would seemingly get rid of the issue of potential prejudice or actual prejudice, given the fact that you as a body can hear all the information and rule accordingly. So, I do believe that you have the ability to move forward this evening. But having said that, you as a body, if you feel uncomfortable with this, have the lawful ability to send it back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration if you think that's the most prudent way to approach the situation.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Further, Mr. Mayor?
All right. I also had received that letter and had some concerns about this as well. And I went to review the video of the Planning Commission, and it stops and stutters starts so much, you can't really follow it very well at all.
So, I believe many of the questions that Ms. Reifer asked were not related to the specific expansion or contraction of the waterwell easement. And Deputy Director, Acting Director Fritzl did offer her the opportunity to get her questions answered the following day by the Public Works staff. I think some of her questions pertain to what was shown on an exhibit that we presented, which was really just to show the boundary change. What actually gets recorded as part of the Development Agreement Amendment is a, basically a line drawing that is approved by a surveyor. So, the layer, the lines that we presented on the screen at that time were more for information on the outline of the area change. And I think we just picked a different civil plan to put that layer on. I think that may have caused some of her questions.
And the city attorney has provided assurance that procedurally, that there's no real gap there.
The issue that I read was whether there's a formal opening and a formal closing. That seems less relevant to the question of was there a fair opportunity for the public to address the issues?
And to several points, I think if Ms. Reifer has questions that she feels have been unanswered, she could certainly ask them again this evening.
Okay, that sounds good. And with that, this is a public hearing. So, at this stage, if there's no further question, I will ask for any members of the public that wish to comment on this, please come forward.
Good evening, Council, Jose Trinidad Castaneda. On the staff report, you're simply voting on the easement and the therefore clause that shows the changing cost of this is pretty straightforward. I see no reason why the council shouldn't vote for this unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other commenters, any Zoom calls?
Yes, good evening again, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Jane Reifer. Am I able to be heard?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. It'll become pretty noisy in a second because I'm traveling. I was only going to be discussing the procedural issues this time because I'm unused to going to a public, a noticed public hearing and not having my issues addressed during the public hearing before the entity will vote on the issue. It's just very unusual to be said, oh, you can get all your questions answered afterwards, after we've already voted. And then, when I was looking through that, I noticed that the public hearing had never been opened and had never been closed. And I'm not here to litigate. I don't understand how this works. But I do know, but I did think that there would be no way that the issue could be addressed tonight in the substantive matters because the procedural matter had been, there had not been a public hearing. And so, I'm a little confused as how to proceed with this, whether I should just say, look, the public expects that there's going to be a public hearing, and that if there are substantive questions that are asked, that they be addressed at least before the votes happen. And so, I'm not quite sure which way to do this. But I will say, in the future, if this kind of thing happens, how is a public supposed to have confidence in the public hearing process when it, when it doesn't happen properly? And now, to address some substantive issues, the, what I had been concerned about is what it looked like was being voted on as an amendment to the agreement was information that was not the same, that had changed in various ways since what was originally in the agreement. So, it looks like you're voting for things that you haven't... If those items are just for information, that's not clear. It looks like those things are actually gonna be part of your new agreement. I think that's important to understand. And I will also say that what you're voting on tonight does not match what is being addressed in the staff report and so forth. As I was looking through these materials, I noticed that was an additional substantive issue that's listed on the last page of the staff report, I believe. No, the last page of the, of the new draft agreement, there was, the additions were listed in bold or red line or something like that originally, and the staff report addresses that. But there's an additional item that you're voting for tonight in the agreement. It's a change that has not been highlighted in your staff report, but it is there in the actual agreement, and it is different than the original agreement. If you look at the two side by side, you'll see that. I can't produce it tonight because I'm traveling. So, I don't believe that this meeting was noticed properly either. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we can...
Oh, one more.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gamble.
Yes, Curtis Gamble, activist. I like the Goodman project completely, 100%. Tonight, what we're talking about, which I don't know a lot about, but I do know that the new council that came in knows nothing about the Goodman project. This was voted in, you know, very quickly. I don't feel that the community is getting their proper notice, proper, just the overall proper participation, proper advantages, whatever, from this project. Again, this was voted in very clearly from the beginning. I would like to see, even tonight, I would like to see the full council here debating this, this issue. And this is just one of the issues that we have, you know, which is, which is okay. But what's not okay is that we have council, council members up there who really don't know anything about this project. You know, and the council is very smart, and if they, this project is too big to not know every detail of this. I mean, it could be, for example, real quick, it's in the SP2 zone, where emergency shelters are supposed to go for the, for the homeless, for the community. And tonight, the community was here crying out. And this project, and working with the Goodman, the community can benefit. But I hate to see the community crying out for something when we gave away for $200 million. Well, we sold the property, well, Goodman bought the property for $200 million, and we gave Goodman everything that they wanted. We didn't get the roads repaired. Well, I think, I think we might have went back and said, okay, you gotta repair the roads in front of, in front of the project. But we had to go back. I think the last city manager, Dermer, had to go back and ask for that. Things that you wouldn't ask somebody who's building a project to do, they would normally do it because it's in front of the, it's in front of the building that they, the roads are in front of the building that they're, that they're building. So, they would want the roads to be benign. But we had to go back and get this. We missed out on a lot on this $200 million project. And again, I'll say this, again, I don't think anything should be voted on till we have a full council. This is a $200 million project, and we sitting up here, you know, which is good, and we want Goodman to be here. But we don't want the community to come here and cry for things that Goodman can help them do. Again, as far as, I'm just using it to get, as far as that being an SP2 zone, that being a shelter, we could take all the homeless people out of that, out of the community, just put them in that one building where they're supposed to be. And I'll end this here. Again, we need the full council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will bring back the discussion to the council at this point, so close the public hearing. And before we vote, I wonder if staff could address that last issue that was brought up on the Zoom call. And of course, the very last issue by Mr. Gamble. This was a private transaction, so obviously, city has approval rights over what goes in there, but not, not as though we have control of the land completely.
Certainly, thank you, Mayor. To clarify a few things, and I'm making some assumptions as to what Ms. Reifer may be confused about. But essentially, what you have in your pocket is the First Amendment to the Development Agreement. What that does is, within the development agreement, there is an Exhibit C, which references all of the public benefits, things that the city gets from this project. Included in there is the waterwell easement. This is the same exhibit that was part of the approved development agreement. What the amendment does is basically, it replaces this Exhibit C with a new Exhibit C. The only change to the Exhibit C is with respect to the waterwell easement. So, everything else is entirely the same. The two changes in the waterwell easement are namely, the reduction in price for the reduction in area, and then the additional tax, I'm assuming is what Ms. Reifer was referring to. The original agreement specified five incremental payments, but did not really clarify, the assumption being annual, but did not clearly state that. So, we clarified that when we say five installment payments, that that means annually. And actually, to our benefit, the developer also agreed that the timing of the first payment could extend beyond 30 days from parcel map recordation to no later than 120 days. So, that also is to the city's benefit to give us time to process that transaction. Those were the only changes to that section. Everything else stays as is. To clarify, this project does actually repave the entirety of all of the streets that surround essentially this large block, with the exception of State College, because that was a city rehab project recently. So, the developer will be repaving the entirety. And when I say entirety, I mean full width, past center line of Orange Thorpe to Acacia and State College, Kimberly and Acacia. As you'll note in the development agreement, there is the potential for reimbursement on the south side of Orange Thorpe. Should properties on the south side redevelop, they would reimburse the developer for a proportional share of the cost if they were to redevelop within 10 years. But it's at the risk of the developer. If there was no development south of Orange Thorpe, we get the full width of new, fresh pavement at the developer's cost.
So, you're very confident that those are the only variations?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, well, thank you for that. We appreciate that reassurance.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
With that, I'll move the item, sir. I'll second.
Moved and seconded, so we would be ready for a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Passes three zero.
And with that, we are at the last item on this agenda, which is item number 18, involving issuance of not to exceed $35 million of City of Fullerton Public Financing Authority revenue obligations for benefit of Marshall B. Ketchum University.
Before the report begins, I need to indicate that I personally served, or have served until recently on the Board of Directors of Marshall B. Ketchum University. As such, I have a conflict of interest. I'll be excusing myself this evening, but there is a good counsel present to advise you appropriately.
And Mr. Mayor, this is a public hearing, correct?
Yes, it will be when I ask for public comment, sure.
So, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This public hearing is required per the Tax and Entity Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TAFRA for short, to enable the City of Fullerton's Public Financing Authority to act as a conduit to allow for tax exempt financing. At the end of the public hearing, the City Council and the Board of Directors of the Fullerton Public Financing Authority will be requested to approve two separate resolutions authorizing and approving the Fullerton Public Financing Authority to issue tax exempt financing. This evening, we have in chambers the city's municipal advisory firm, Urban Futures, represented by Brandon Calfori, Marshall B. Ketchum University's municipal advisory firm, Campanelli Group, represented by John Fan, and Marshall B. Ketchum University's underwriting firm, Stifel, represented by John Kim. Also virtually present, present via Zoom is Frank Scotty, the Chief Financial Officer with Marshall B. Ketchum University, and Chick Adams of Jones Hall, who is serving as the city's attorney and issuer's counsel on this particular transaction. As mentioned earlier, a TAFRA public hearing is required to issue tax exempt obligations on behalf of nonprofits. This public hearing is required to enable the public to comment as to whether the city should act as a conduit to allow for tax exempt financing. It is important to note that there is no financial reporting or continuing disclosure obligations with CDAC or the MSRB for the City of Fullerton with respect to this issuance. Marshall B. Ketchum University, or MBKU for short, is a healthcare university with a college of optometry, school of physician assistant, and college of pharmacy located here in the City of Fullerton. MBKU seeks to refund its 2015 debt obligations, which were issued by the Fullerton Public Financing Authority. MBKU is required, is requesting the Fullerton Public Financing Authority to facilitate issuance of revenue obligations in an amount not to exceed $35 million. The school intends to finance or refinance the cost of capital projects for the benefit of its educational facilities. With that, this continues the presentation for the public hearing. It is recommended that the City Council, the City of, the City of Fullerton City Council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of revenue obligations for the purpose of refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, furnishings, and equipping of certain educational facilities, providing the terms and conditions for such obligations and other matters relating thereto for the benefit of Marshall B. Ketchum University and/or a related successor agency. And it is recommended that the Board of Directors of the Fullerton Public Financing Authority adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the issuance of bonds in an amount not to exceed $35 million for the purpose of making a loan to Marshall B. Ketchum University for the purpose of financing and refinancing the cost of acquisition, construction, improvement, renovation, furnishing, and equipping of certain property, providing the terms and conditions for such loan and other matters relating thereto and authorizing the execution of certain documents herein specified. And with that, this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. I appreciate that. And I will open the public hearing to receive public, if there's no question of Ms. Ellis at this stage, to request anyone wishing to speak to this matter to come forward. And seeing no takers in the chamber, I would ask whether there are Zoom callers?
I see no hands raised in Zoom.
And with that, wanted to provide ample time. All right, I will close the public hearing. We'll bring the matter back to council.
I'll move the items, Samir.
Moved.
I'll second.
And seconded, and we're ready for a roll call.
I'm dropping my pen, and you're a step ahead of me. Apologize for that.
It's only $35 million.
I know. We can afford another pen for me at some point.
Oh, I did want to thank everyone for their patience waiting for this moment tonight. So, thank you for being here.
Okay, pen in hand. Councilmember Jung?
Aye.
Councilmember Zara?
Aye.
Mayor Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion passes three zero. And if I could indulge you, I forgot to read the ordinance title on item 17, which I'm sure you all noticed. If I can read it very quickly? It'll be ordinance number 3002, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Fullerton, California, approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Fullerton and GLC Fullerton LLC concerning Goodman Logistics Center Fullerton Project. Thank you. Now we kept it legal.
And, Mr. Mayor, before we close up shop this evening, if I may, sir?
Certainly.
I had some concerns that I wanted to address to our staff and our public safety officials here this evening about the Pacific Drive Park, the amount of trash in their parking lot. I've actually been there personally in the last week, and it's, it's hard to see. The same holds true for the safe parking area. That lot, that was used for that, has a significant amount of waste and trash that requires removal. You know, no resident in Fullerton... You know, no resident in Fullerton should be terrorized by trash or waste or vehicles that park it, you know. We've worked to strengthen these relationships with the community advocates of unhoused persons in our community and our public safety staff. That outreach has been done. I don't want it to be done in vain. I'd like these cleanups to happen in a timely manner, if I may, sir. And it's the one thing that I note about our Parks and Rec staff and our Public Works staff that did the work for Pacific Drive Park. I don't want the narrative to be painted that indeed, we don't want parks. What we're asking for, what I'm asking for, is a thoughtfulness that is involved in, in drawing up these parks from its inception, how we do landscape sustainability, et cetera. And I don't think that's a hard thing to ask, because I think if we can get parks that the community around it's invested in, that we're invested in as a city, we can avoid some of these issues that we're having now long term with this kind of trash and, and other things. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your indulgence.
Mr. Zara, anything further? With that, we are adjourned until our next regular meeting, Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021, at 6:30 PM.